Good morning, the council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
Good morning, the roll call is now open. The roll call is now open. Please log into your devices and mark yourself present. The quorum roll call is open. If you need support, please raise your hand. Thank you. I will now take a voice vote for those who have not voted. Alderman Hopkins, not present. Alderman Hall. Alderman Hall is present. Alderman Beal, not present. Alderman Coleman, not present. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis is present. Alderman O'Shea, not present. Alderman Mosley, not present. Alderman Rodriguez, not present. Alderman O'Shea? Alderman O'Shea is present. Alderwoman Scott, not present. Alderwoman, Alderperson Jessie Fuentes, not present. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is present. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez, not present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa, not present. Alderwoman Metz, not present. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman, oh, I'm sorry, Alderperson Vasquez, not present. Alderperson Clay, not present. Alderwoman Silverstein, not present. Alderperson Fuentes? Present? Present. Alderman Person Fuentes is present. Anyone else I missed? Who else? Who? Okay. Anyone else? All right, quorum is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are thirty-eight present, so we do have a quorum. There are a number of alders that have requested to participate in today's meeting remotely for reasons stated in Rule 59. Alders Metz, Rodriguez Sanchez, and Silverstein, can I get a motion to approve their remote participation and have them added to the quorum? It's been moved. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. In the opinion of the Chair, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, please mark the following alders, Metz, Rodriguez Sanchez, and Silverstein, participating remotely, present for the roll call. Very, very well. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation which should be delivered today by Dr. Joel D. Taylor from St. Paul Missionary Baptist Church.
May we bow our heads. Eternal God, our Father, our Creator, Redeemer, Deliverer, that than which none greater can be conceived, the Father of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, Rebecca, Leah, and Hannah, a Father for the fatherless and a Mother for the motherless. We're cognizant this morning that you have this whole world in the palm of your hand, which means that you have our mayor, the city of Chicago, and elected officials in your hand. Lord, let me say thank you.
Thank you, Lord.
For our rich history in this month of Black History. We thank you for our rich history that gave us Danny Davis, the Sawyers, Strosiers, Austons, William Dawson, Roland Berres, Ralph Metcalf, Jesse White, Carol Mosley Brown, Emile Jones, James Meek, and the Honorable Harold Washington. We thank you for the past leadership of the Dalleys, Emanuel, and Lightfoot. We thank you for all of our past aldermen and women who have made this city a great city on whose shoulders we stand on. We thank you, Jehovah, for our present mayor, the Honorable Brandon Johnson. Lord, we pray that you would bless him. We pray that you would keep him. We pray that you would give him wisdom and knowledge to deal with the city of Chicago. Lord, we realize that he's in a hot seat, and there's always negativity around him. But keep him positive and keep him marching forward. Bless all of our elected officials. Bless all of the fifty alderpersons. Bless our city workers. Bless their coming out and their coming in. Give them wisdom and knowledge to deal with our crisis, our problems, and perplexities. I thank you for every city council member. I don't know them all, but I know a few of them. And I thank you for Anthony Beal, who people in our community are bragging about. Lord, I thank you for my Christian community friends, David Moore, who I met through Clay Evans. I thank you for Walter Burnett Jr., I met through Reverend Griffin. I thank you for Jason Irvin and his wife, who are personal family friends and friends of our churches. I thank you for Reverend William Hall and my sister Stephanie Coleman. But Lord, there's some I don't know, but I want you to bless them. I want you to keep them. I want you to help them in their endeavors. Lord, our city needs you more than we've ever needed you before.
Yes, Lord.
Help us lift up the least, the lost, the left out, and left behind. Help us take care of those that live in the city and not those that's coming in the city. Father, we need you to empower us to fight crime. Few bad people in blue don't make all police officers bad, for they risk their lives every day. Lord, we need you not to remove technology, but add more to curtail the violence. Make every city ward safe. We need you to help our city. You can't drive without smelling dope. We want you to take control of our school system and not have people bowing to unions that are not educating our children. Raise somebody to stand up for our children. Give us a budget that reflects the interests of our diverse city. Help us provide for the homeless of our city. Provide all the finances needed for our mayor's budget. Help us, Lord, to stop worrying about being politically correct, but doing what's correct. Lord, make Chicago a beacon light to a murky world. Make Chicago a city of love, hope, and peace. Make Chicago a great city so that I won't be confronted about negative news when I travel across this world. Do it right now, and we'll be so careful to give you the praise, the glory, and honor you so richly deserve. In the mighty, majestic, and marvelous name of Jesus, we do pray. Amen.
Amen. You may be seated. Mr. Clerk, Madam Clerk, please add Alderman Vasquez to the roll call, please. Mr. Clerk, please add Alderman Mosley to the roll call, please. Madam, Mr. Clerk, please add Alderwoman Scott to the roll call, please. Vasquez, Scott, and Mosley. You're welcome. Are there any other members that wish to be added to the roll call? Very well, then. Mr. Clerk, public comments now.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. Our first speaker today is Lisa Bowden.
Lisa Bowden is not present.
Our next speaker is George Blake Moore.
Good morning to the, to my Black people here. This is disgraceful. This is Black History Month, and I see some of our beautiful ladies having on these African garments. You don't show your Blackness by how you dress. You show your Blackness by how you vote. And some of you voted for sanctuary. If anybody needs sanctuary, Black people need it. Now, this, over here, they very disrespectful. Michelle Harris and all, I'm just talking while I'm talking. We, they are part of the problem. The Black people have issues because you have poor Black leadership. And Reverend Woo got somebody up here praying for us. Just pray your way off this plantation. Pray your way into reparation. This is disgraceful. No boycott, no Black, empty seats of Black people. It was packed with these illegal immigrants and packed with these white Jews and white Arabs. Where are the Black people? The ancestors hate you! They never knew that you were gonna turn out like you are and do what you're doing. You're disgraceful. The miseducation of the Black man, Carter G. Woodson said, the miseducation of the Black men. And what kind of man did they make on the plantation? Use your imagination. It start with a N. We got to purge ourselves of that and become strong Black men and women. You got no representation. Black faces in high places, but no representation. It's sad. Look at here. This place should be packed with Black people. You have no flag. You're disgraceful. You, to the ancestors, if God can conceive this, Malcolm X, and all our heroes and heroes, and Harriet Tubman said, "I could have freed no Blacks if they knew they were slaves." Don't you know we still on the plantation? Don't let this fool you. Don't go there. You're not like these white Altman. You're not like these Hispanic Altman. You're not like the Asian Altman. You are Black Altman. And remember your Blackness. Remember where you came from and how you got here. And you haven't got over, looking back, how I got over. You haven't got over the legacy of slavery. You're still on this white man's plantation in a high place.
Mr. Blake Moore, thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker, our next speaker is Tuan Sims.
Hey, good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
I find it courageous, the way the man speak. I know y'all think it's entertaining, and a lot of us bow our heads to it because we convicted by it. But we losing in this city, Black people. I'm the young Black man that love Black people. I'm the young Black man that's wild about Black people. But I'm also the young Black man in this city that's being underserved, mistreated, and just basically made to be invisible. I've been attacked in this city, shot multiple times. I've been pushed to the side by law enforcement. For what reason, I don't know. I'm attacked by judges, for what reason, I don't know. I guess it's for speaking up for Black people. That's the only thing I can think about. But we just received new representation in Brandon Johnson. I was like, yeah, we got a smart Black man in the school board, all these little different things. I was like, yeah. But then I think about other things. So, to speak about what? I'm from Rogers Park. I'm from the North Side for thirty years. I'm sure most of you all are here about Palina or East Rogers Park, and I'd understand, how can that be a part of the North Side of Chicago? Multiple murders, unsolved. My brother was killed in nineteen ninety-five. His name is Walter Sims. I have not had a follow-up call. There was a young man murdered, what, a few weeks, not, a few months ago? When the, what, the yellow line crashed? His name is Kenneth. He was murdered by a young man named Kamari. I know both of these young kids. Friends murdered, but one of them is gonna get off because the charges that were filed against him were dropped. So, the city is showing us that Black lives don't matter, or Black life does not matter to it. And we being condemned in this sense. We being forgotten in that thought. So, I'm the young Black man, Tuan Sims, that love Black people and wanna see some type of resolve in it. Some reparation, maybe. Some understanding, hopefully. These are our electates, we got Maria Haddon, Alderman Beal in the far South Side, everybody that should feel responsible. Everybody lining they pockets, everybody getting something out of it. Everybody, except for the people. So, we ask, honestly, wholeheartedly, when do we get the consideration? When? When? Honestly? I'm from your war forty-ninth. We got a congressional woman been in the office for twenty-four years. When do we get some consideration? No, don't shake your head, Maria, 'cause I've been hitting you up for like, what, the last few weeks? I'm sleeping in the twenty-fourth district, woman, and you still ain't, please. But, sorry, y'all.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Jessica Jackson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I'm sure everybody knows about a movie, Scarface, right? It's a classic. Al Pacino, right? Everybody knows about that movie. And we, you know, we focus on the famous lines in that movie. You know, the acting and the hello to my little friend and all that. But it's the beginning of that movie that matters. When those words are coming up on that screen, that's what matters. And those words say, "In May of nineteen eighty, Fidel Castro opened the harbor at Muriel, Cuba, with the apparent intention of letting some of his people join their relatives in the United States. Within seventy-two hours, three thousand U.S. boats were headed for Cuba. It soon became evident that Castro was forcing the boat owners to carry back with them not only their relatives, but the dregs of his jails. Of that hundred and twenty-five thousand refugees that landed in Florida, an estimated twenty-five thousand had criminal records." That's what's up. That's what has happened in the United States right now. All this asylum-seeking lie, all this about refugees, no, no, no. What's happening is they're emptying out the dregs of their jails into the United States, into our communities. They're junking up our country. And yeah, we feel some kind of way about it 'cause it's our country. It's our country. People like Vasquez and them, look how disrespectful they are. Now, you just gave that man a resolution for his father's restaurant. And every time we get up and talk, he's working this room. Look at him. Look at him. But he wants his resolution for his father to be respected. Vasquez, Lopez, all them want their people to be respected, but they can't even give us the dignity for what we built, for them. Ain't no question about it. Yeah, Black History Month, the American descendants of slavery. And I want you to know, Brandon Johnson, I understand what Blake Moore saying about we still on the plantation, but what you looking at right now, this is what a free Negro look like. And I'm telling you, we gonna get our city back, we gonna stand for our people, we gonna get them out of our communities, 'cause they don't deserve to be there. Anytime they can't give us three lousy minutes of their attention while we sit here and watch y'all getting them all kind of money, you watch us. We Black out here, and we gonna handle our business. You watch that. I'm a free Black woman. This how we get down.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Zoe Lee.
I'm gonna start with the words of Desmond Yancey. This behavior is not only acceptable, it is an indication that he is unfit for leadership. Majority of the people sitting on city council is unfit for leadership. And I know this is not the same Yancey that didn't vote censure Carlos Ramirez Rosa because they would weaponize you. None of you public servants cannot afford to be arguing and fighting like children when it's a whole war outside. Let's get into it. It's sixty-eight thousand Chicagoans that are homeless, majority of them are Black. Our Black kids are running rampant out here, record carjackings, record auto theft and robberies. Downtown has three to four illegal families on every block begging for work and selling Kit Kat bars after a billion dollars was spent on them. Where is that money? Where is the money for the South Side and the West Side communities? That should be, that should be the argument. It's twenty Black aldermen and women and a lot of upset Black constituents who voted y'all in. So, run into the white media outlets who won't even run a story about stolen properties being taken in our communities, the displacement of elder people, the mass illegal evictions happening on the South Side, and the massive bedbug problem that the Chicago Public Housing Authority has had and is not being addressed, when it's a Chicago bedbug ordinance that is supposed to charge a landowner two thousand dollars per day. So, just like the Latino alderpeople in here that stick together, it should be the same with the Blacks. And lastly, when are you gonna find a floor leader? It's been three months. That should be another argument. We also will be voting no to bring Chicago home on March nineteenth. And Mayor Johnson, glad to hear you decided not to ask city council to approve not another dollar for the illegals. If the crisis is so bad, the city council members who are so concerned to donate their salaries to the cause like a real public servant should. Happy fucking Black History.
We, we just want to remind, that speakers are reminded that people of all ages are listening to the public comments, and we ask that you please refrain and respect the others and refrain from personal attacks or using profanity. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Michael Young Bay.
May I have your undivided attention, please?
Yes, you do. Good morning.
Okay. Because when someone's speaking up at this mic, shouldn't aldermen be talking or having no sidebar or nothing? That also is in y'all rules. Just as well as when the vote is on the table, we're doing a roll call, shouldn't nobody be leaving in and out. But that happened during the Emmett incident. You see, y'all not respecting the rules, and so you're not respecting the public. And as the chairman, the mayor should be calling y'all out. That's what a chairman do. He don't, he don't sit back and allow y'all to break the rules. Because if we do something that you don't like, then you wanna call the police. You wanna have a person removed. You see? What we been speaking about is about reparations. We been down here speaking about fair wages. We been speaking about the homeless of our people. And for the most part, it been falling on deaf ear. It been falling on deaf ear. You can say I prophesied this day, 'cause yesterday for the members that was here, I say it'll be us three plus one. So, Joey here today. And I gave honest to Greg Mitchell. And today, I give honest to Haddon, you know, for him and my wife, for helping, assisting. Jeanette Taylor, for bringing us in her office to hear our plea. Also to Yancey. I give high honest to him too, for assisting me, et cetera. We have to show much love and unity amongst each other because it's a bigger fight out here. It's a real big fight because, you know, I'm actually experiencing all these things. They say they gave migrants nine thousand dollars. Damn, they, they let us go all the way, months to get in court, to where our bill ran up to nine thousand dollars. We came down here. I gave you a hard drive with every information on there, Mayor Johnson, and you still haven't met with me and my wife. What's going on? Why you can't meet with us in the discrimination that was happening to us? Y'all be talking this stuff about the children and stuff. It started over them, over Salvation Army discriminating against my child, a five-year-old child, well, at the time, three. Broke my daughter hard that she can't go to the class that they had in the Salvation Army. She was crying for weeks. She have a delay right now because of that, 'cause my daughter don't like just toys. Her number-one thing is education, is school. You see, I've been fighting a lot with the nonsense that been going on. Then I come down here, and it's the nonsense. And so, Hitty Hall supposed to be some sacred, but yet y'all got somebody pastoring, sound like he running for a campaign.
Thank you very much, sir, for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Thank you very much. Resolutions. We have three resolutions today, celebrating Black History Month, honoring the legacy of the Divine Nine, and honoring the one-hundred-and-fifty-seventh anniversary of Morehouse College. Alderman Mitchell.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of these resolutions.
Hearing no objections, so ordered in the interest of respecting people's time, we will forego the reading of the resolutions and go straight to remarks from the city So, we're going to allow for a moment for the box, for our guests to have an opportunity to get to the box. But our first resolution is celebrating Black History Month. If there are alders that wish to speak to this resolution, please indicate, and we will place you in the order in which you indicate. Thank you very much. As the members that are being honored today work their way to the box, we have a few members that wish to speak. The first person the Chair recognizes, Alderman Will Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I want to, first of all, say thank you to all of those who are in the box, some of which I know personally. But I want to highlight a woman who invited me into her home when I was knocking doors, Ms. Darlene Tribute, who recently celebrated a birthday and has led the Park Manor neighbors for so many years. and has led the Park Manor neighbors for so many years, longer than I've been alive. And so I want Chicago and the world to know that there's power and unity. And so thank you, Ms. Darlene Tribute, for unifying our ward and always showing up and allowing me to speak and always inviting me to your dining room table. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Hall. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Michelle Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I'm proud to support this resolution. I do want to acknowledge one of my personal friends, Chuck Bowen, who is going to be recognized by another word, but to thank him for his years of leadership and commitment and for helping the ministry. So today, Chuck, a beautiful life and a legacy. Thank you for being here with us today. But one of my very own residents, Paul King, has played a leading role in advocating for the inclusion of black individuals in the construction and the trades, addressing both underrepresented and systematic barriers by black builders, contractors. He began in 1969, and he's worked and still is working out there in the field today to help people and bring black people into the construction venue. Paul King has been, I just can't even tell, he changes the life, like, and he's worked with Springfield to change, to change both local and national levels, resulting in regulation and executive orders that have changed the economic justice for blacks and minority communities within the industry. He's a successful entrepreneur. King founded UBM, which under his leadership became one of the nation's top black-owned general contracting firms. King is also a writer, who has published in The Black Scholar, Black Entrepreneur, The Chicago Tribune, The Sun-Times, and Indigo. And he's even authored two books. Born and raised on the South Side, Mr. King lives with his lovely wife and my soror, Loeann. Together, they've raised two wonderful sons, Paul III and Tim King. King's lifelong dedication to social justice, business leadership, and advancement of black people in the construction industry and beyond reflects a deep-seated commitment to bettering his community and serves as a testament to his enduring legacy. Today, I'm proud to celebrate the life and the legacy of Paul King, who couldn't be here with us today, but he's out there on the screen. Mr. King, thank you for being a wonderful resident and taking it and playing it forward.
Thank you, Alderwoman Harris. The chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Wow, and I came in late. That was quick. I don't hear my hand up. I thought I was fifth. Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I stand in support of this resolution. I want to commend all of my colleagues who brought someone down, because as I look at this box, many of these people here, y'all have made great choices, because they just didn't serve your ward, they served all of us. And I want to thank you all so much for your service. I cannot, before I get to my person, I want to thank you, Mr. Bowen, for all of your years of service. Thank you for always being there with and for my leader, Reverend Clay Evans, over the years, as you worked in this administration, allowing me to be in rooms that others couldn't be in, so I can get to this point where I have the knowledge and understanding to operate in government. So thank you so much for your service over the years. I see Ms. Darlene Tribute, even before I became alderman, a person that was there, supportive, teaching us young people how to lead and be leaders. And so there are just so many people in this box, even Mr. King, as I was at CHA, the many people that he helped, as Terry Peterson, when he was head over there. I just saw the work that you all did, and I want to say I appreciate you. There's a person that I brought down here. I tell people, there are people in life that you have to sometimes be so afraid of that you are afraid to do anything bad and disappoint them in life. That person for me in life was Reverend Clay Evans. I wouldn't go to certain places, because I didn't want to mess up his name. And I didn't do certain things, because I didn't want to mess up his name. Well, there's a person in our, in my ward, that I don't ever want any bad news to get back to about me, and that's Ms. Shirley Bryant. That's because of everything that she's done throughout the 17th Ward and Auburn Gresham Community for many, many years. From being a beat facilitator, still a senior, when people saying, "I'm afraid of gang members, I'm afraid of this," she go out there and she talk to them. She don't holler at them, but she, she stern with them like a mother. To this day, they still respect her. She's, she's on the board of Target Area Group, when we're talking about violence prevention. She sits on that board. She's on the senior subcommittee for the 6th District Police, and also National Night Out Committee on that committee. But also a beat facilitator, showing up at all her beat meetings, making sure our community stays safe. But also, also, holding her electors accountable. And I thank you for that. Trust me, she's got in my behind a few times, but she's still here, because it's about respect. It's not to hurt you, it's to make you better. And I thank you so much, Ms. Bryant, for making me a better person. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman. When you refer to young people, were you referring to yourself? Yes?
I am young.
Okay, very good. All right. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Pat Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. I want to say to Chuck Bowen, good, good job, Chuck. I'm glad to see you down here. I guess Lamont and I need to fight over a couple of people in the box, but I'm glad to see that he brought you down here today. But I rise today, because in the 3rd Ward, we are fortunate to have a genuine humanitarian in the form of Pastor Earl Granberry. Will you please stand? From True Rock Ministries, which is located at 16th and Wabash. Now, I'm sure many of you are familiar with Reverend Granberry and his Acts of Kindness Truck, because it goes all over the city, giving away toys, furniture, toiletries, food and clothing to people in need. Just a few weeks ago, he was the person responsible for feeding hundreds of homeless people, migrants, public housing residents, that all gathered at his church to get food and clothing when they were in need. And a few weeks ago, I picked up the phone to call him about a young man at a local school who was living in a situation at home where he didn't have any food, really no security or parents around him. And Reverend Granberry jumped in immediately, provided that family, the boy's brothers with food, went over to their house in the middle of the night to take care of that family. This is rare, because most pastors, unfortunately, stay within the walls of their church, and we need to make sure that pastors and celebrate pastors who come outside of the walls of the church to do good. No one is immune to the blessings that Pastor Granberry and his Acts of Kindness Trucks bestows on those in need. And he's been a pastor now for about 40 years, but he's not just a pastor, he's also an author, an author of a book called Don't Forget to Close the Door, which you can find on Amazon, by the way. And he is someone who graduated from DeSable High School. You ran track, right? And so I want to say that there's enormous need in Chicago, and this is a pastor who helps to fulfill that need in the city of Chicago. And for that, Pastor Granberry, and your commitment to the city of Chicago, the city of Chicago and the residents of the 3rd Ward celebrates you today and acknowledge your lovely wife, Mrs. G. We all call Pastor Granberry Pastor G. And so, Mrs. G, it's good to see you here today as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this celebration.
You're welcome, and thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Desmond Yancey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I rise in support of this resolution. I see a couple friends in the box I want to acknowledge. First off, Evelyn Johnson, everybody's favorite Mama E. She's just done so much in this community, and I'm just so grateful that she is here. Don't cry. My cousin Quentin Curtis in the Black Fire Brigade, you know, if it wasn't for the work that you all have done, we'd have much fewer, much less representation, you know, in our EMS services. So keep on doing that hard work. And then I want to acknowledge who I brought in from the 5th Ward, the mayor of Greater Grand Crossing, Sam Benyon. Sam Benyon and I met last fall, about a year and a half ago, when I decided to run for alderman, and he called me, didn't know me, and said, "I'm with you." And we spent the first few months getting signatures out of his backyard, with a heater in the garage, old-school campaign stuff. And just grateful to be able to support his work in Greater Grand Crossing and because of that, and all you do, also with Operation Neighborhood Safety. This brother and a bunch of other not-so-young folks get out during the summer months and sit at gas stations to help make sure that people feel safe all along the 3rd District, 2nd and 3rd District. So, man, brother, thank you so much for all that you do. We love you, appreciate you, and 5th Ward celebrates you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Derek Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I want to thank and congratulate everyone in the box today. I want to talk really briefly about a young man that grew up running around in the halls and the courtyards of Cabrini-Green Projects. This young man had a fetish for emergency vehicles. He always wanted to be a firefighter. One day, unfortunately, there was a fire. He saw a fire truck rushing down the street, chasing after this truck, and he saw a black man firefighter on the back of this truck. And he said, "One day, I want to be just like him." He actually went to a firehouse at a very young age. They mentored him, and until he was up to age to take the fire exam, pass the exam, and after 26 years, rising as the rank of lieutenant, he has been actually very successful. Quentin Curtis, everyone knows him as Q. Actually hate the name Quentin Curtis. He has his, his thing for, hey, call me Q. He started the Black Fire Brigade, started in 2018, came together with volunteer firefighters, police officers, and medical, certified medical technicians, to put together a brigade that would help the kids on the inner-city streets of the city of Chicago. To this day, since 2018, the Black Fire Brigade has put 725 young men and women from all across the city and the country through this program. There's been 225 single moms, and the most thing I love about this, 14 homeless young men. All of this was done with no city, no county, and no state funding. It was all through fundraising efforts, which cost about $1,400 or $1,500 per kid to send through this program. So I want to honor you today, Quentin Curtis, you want to stand? And the Black Fire Brigade. I bought into this program, actually, I hate, I have on my shirt and my pin.
Made me nervous for a second there, thank you.
Hey. I bought into this program because, Mayor, you know, the Black Fire Brigade motto is, if you teach a child to save a life, they'll be less likely to take one. And this is a proven, a proven, proven organization that's been saving the lives of these kids. We've been trying very hard to get funding, because fundraising is hard. So again, we'll be advocating for funds even from the city, Mr. President. Again, I thank you guys for being a part of all of the kids' life. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderwoman Mitz, do you wish to be recognized? The chair recognizes Alderwoman Emma Mitz.
And for the purpose of the Quorum, Miss, where are Mr. Mitz?
Absolutely. You are no longer remote, and we're glad to have you live in the flesh.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, I want to stand today in support of this resolution. I take this very personal, as we look to pick someone from our community to come down to be honored today. And it's certainly a reward, don't you wouldn't be sitting in that box, somebody thought highly enough of you, to select you for the work that you've done throughout the years, and it should be recognized here in the council. Let me recognize my constituent. Her name is Ms. Roberta Wilson, a longtime 37th Ward resident and loyal community activist. An educator advocate and supporter, has worked to improve the life of young people through education for nearly three decades of giving scholarships. She has served as a tenuous, tireless, and dedicated liaison between local and state educators, policymaker, and community residents. She has marched for school choice, a kind, yet outspoken woman. Ms. Wilson, as I call her, the alderman, best describes her life philosophy in this manner, which she learned from her favorite aunt, who generously gave of her time, talent, and treasure to her family and community. I've always believed that individuals should have the opportunity to reach their highest potential, and I know that education is the best way to open the door to the future success. I was taught to aim high and never give up on your dreams. She was employed by the Chicago Public Schools for over 27 years. Ms. Wilson transferred her love of education to several generous, generation of lucky students. She is very active in the 37th Ward, volunteer for local churches, block club president, are energetic members of many, many local organizations. Ms. Wilson has reached the 90s now, and she's still on the battlefield. I would like to say this. This is a testimony to us when we disagree. So Ms. Wilson and I haven't always agreed, but yet we may remain compassionate, understanding, and caring, which gave me even more respect for her and the work that she do. Respecting your elders. And I applaud you today, Ms. Wilson, giving you your flowers while you live. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you very much, Alderwoman Mitz. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Jeanette Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy black history. You know, too often, these 28 days ain't enough, because I wear this black skin 24/7. And the thought that people are okay with questioning what black leadership is doing is a problem, especially when you don't know what it's like to walk around with this black skin. And all black people do all the time is mind their own business, but it's funny, somebody always got something to say. For the people who built the country for free, for the people who are always carrying the water for everybody else, it's, it's the audacity and the oxygen of some people who sit amongst us to say what black leadership are doing. Remember, we couldn't be in black leadership. Remember, we couldn't be in this space. And so forgive us for struggling to hold it together, but stand with us and stop talking about us, because it's easy for you to throw out your talking points and say what you think about us, when you ain't that right with your own community yourself. So let's humble ourselves before we talk about black leadership. And so, I thought Desmond was gonna steal my lady, but Mama E affectionately belongs to the 20th Ward. Mama Evelyn Jones is a lifelong resident of the city of Chicago. Mama Evelyn Jones is a lifelong resident of the city of Chicago. She's been doing community work since 1972, a member of the 7th District Caps since its inception. She has worked on numerous campaigns. She's completed six books. Mama E, you know I love you. You know there is nothing like an elder in your community checking you, and that's Mama E. I am honored to sit at her feet and learn the lessons of the past, because the problem with all of this is we ain't learned from our past. Mama E also is a part of the 2003 Granny's Program, and that's why grandmamas sit on the block and they protect the young people in there. Last but not least, Mama E also started reclaiming our Youth Day back in July of 2011, and it's a day of black economic development, intergenerational youth programming, where we teach young black people to own their, their own businesses. Mama E, I love you, I respect you. Thank you for checking me. Thank you for being part of this community. Thank you for not leaving. Happy Black History Month. To the Black Fire Brigade over there. To our black firefighters, thank you for your service to our community. I don't know about y'all, but I don't know if y'all know that the black firefighters have sued the city of Chicago 17 times and won every time. But the problem is, there is no changed behavior for the black brothers and sisters that look out of us every day. And so, that is a problem in our city. To our black firefighters, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being in our community. Thank you for wanting to do this work. Thank you for standing up for this city. Thank you. We gonna get that dissent decree back. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. You're welcome. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak? Okay, we have one more, at least two more. All right, so then we'll go with, the Chair recognizes Alderman Lamont Robinson. Alderman, be careful who you honor. If it's a woman, I've noticed that Alderman David Moore has used this as an opportunity to get free kisses, so beware. Chair recognizes Alderman Lamont Robinson.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for this opportunity. There are several folks in the box that I would like to recognize. I grew up listening to Mama E at Operation Push talk about the issues and concerns that face our community. And Mama E, as a former state representative and as a current Alderman, I hear you, I love you, and I appreciate you. To my pops, Pastor G in the box. Pastor G, as Alderman Dow mentioned, ladies and gentlemen, for 365 days a year cares for folk, not only on the south side of Chicago, Mr. Mayor, but also on the west side of Chicago. You see, I thought that I had taken care of all of my seniors, and for whatever reason, some seniors were missing some Thanksgiving items, food to make Thanksgiving dinner. And I had exhausted, Mr. Mayor, all of my resources, all of my favors, but I knew who to call, who on that very day made sure that those 20 seniors received all of the necessary trimmings to be able to have a Thanksgiving dinner. And so, Pastor G, I thank you for not only doing that for my seniors, but as Alderman Dow mentioned, making sure folks have clothing and other items, kids have toys on Christmas Day. You are what we consider Jesus-like, and we thank you, we honor you, we appreciate you, but you can't do this work alone. You have a woman sitting by your side, and Mama G, that pushes you and makes you better every single day, and is the woman that you put on me when I go left. It's not you, it's Mama G that keeps me straight. And so, Mama G, thank you very much, and I love you. To the Black Fire Brigade, I'm honored that Chairman, Chairwoman, excuse me, Taylor and Chairman Tella Faro have allowed me the opportunity to sit at the table, Mr. Mayor, to make sure that we get it right. We have not done right by our black firefighters in the city of Chicago, and it is a new day. And, Mr. Mayor, I know that with this body, you will get it right. Because folks should not have to sue this great city to be able to get in positions that they deserve. It's wrong, and it ain't right, and, Mr. Mayor, I know again that you will work with this body because you get it. You understand these issues. And so, thank you to the Black Fire Brigade by pushing us to make sure that we do right. If you are running for public office, particularly on the south side, you are asked to go see an individual by the name of Chuck Bowen. At the age of 90, ladies and gentlemen, former Cook County Commissioner Charles R. Bowen, born on 1923, and in 1948, he joined the 184th Artillery at 35th and Giles. He became the youngest precinct captain of the old 2nd Ward under Congressman Bill Dawson of the 1st Congressional District. In 1991, he was assistant to Mayor M. Daley. And in that capacity, he just did not take that role and say, okay, I'm the big shot, assistant to Mayor Daley. He pushed Mayor Daley to do right. And his achievement, his crowding achievement, excuse me, is saving the 35th Street Armory that was going into demolition. All this great history was going to be removed by the city of Chicago. And so, Chuck, thank you for allowing our kids to attend the thriving Chicago Military Academy in Bronzeville. Chuck is an avid art collector that supports black and African artists all across the world, as well as a historian. You need to know something about Chicago? It is Chuck. It is Chuck. And to his lovely wife, thank you, Ms. Bowen. Please stand. Please stand. Thank you for doing what you do to take care of one of our prized possessions. And so, Mr. Mayor, in the African-American community, it takes a village to elevate our community. Mr. Mayor, from you, to our Vice Mayor behind us, to the City of Chicago Treasurer, to our Chairman and our Chairwoman, it is all of us, Mr. Mayor, that elevates the African-American community. And I ask that those of us that are not African-American, that it's your responsibility as Alders of this great city to do right by the African-American community that for far too long has not gotten its rights, has not gotten its due. And so, I ask every Alder in this building to make sure that, again, you do your part to elevate our community. The reason that we have this great city is because of the folks that are here today in this box. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I do apologize, Alderwoman, that you have to come behind that. I would sing a solo to break it up a little bit, but I don't have time for that. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a church girl, I will pass a collection plate and say, thank you, Reverend Robinson, for that. In addition to this being, celebrating centuries of wisdom, hope, love, black excellence, it's also Black Boy Magic Day with being the birthdays of Lamont and David. So, happy birthday to our colleagues. I would like to recognize Mr. Richard Stams, who at the age of 102 years old passed away, but his daughter has kept on the legacy. Before there was a Don Cornelius, there was a fine young man from Inglewood, who was the first African-American to debut on WBBMTV right from the 16th Ward Inglewood neighborhood. Ms. Stams, will you stand? And in her day, she was like Blue Ivy, because she was just the 7th grader at Copronica School on 60th and Troop, and everyone came back to school saying, "We saw your dad on TV." And to be a young black girl in the 1940s and having not witnessed African-Americans on TV was a major deal. And I want to thank you for continuing on his legacy and making sure that Mr. Stams' name is still alive, as we have, the former Alderman Shirley Coleman, who's also here, has named the street and the city has recognized him while he was living. Not only was he a TV personality, but also a radio disc jockey, as well as an entrepreneur and a comedian. I heard that he would give Richard Pryor a run for his money. Good thing they couldn't censor back then on the radio, because I think he would have gotten fined a lot. So, Mr. Stams, born in 1904 in Memphis, Tennessee. What I love about Mr. Stams, and I was just eight years old, he never left Inglewood. He never left 6040 South Racine, and that house is still in the family. And I want to thank you again for not only continuing on the legacy, but being true, diehard Inglewood excellence and refusing not to leave our beloved community. We are Inglewood excellence, and I thank God for you. Thank you. And again, I want to acknowledge everyone in the Black Caucus, who we chose to honor our unsung heroes that we do not know every day, and each and every one of you all have elevated from the Fire Brigade to Chuck Bowen. It is the high school that you founded that should be Chuck Bowen Chicago Military Academy that I graduated from, but each and every one of you have elevated not only the African-American community, but elevated every one of us right here on this council. God bless you, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderwoman. So, I just, I have two final speakers, unless anyone else wishes to speak, I have two final. So, the Chair recognizes Alderman Ronnie Mosley. I got you, brother.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of this resolution, and in particular, to Mr. Edward H. Campbell, Sr., who was born December 22nd, 1920, which by my count makes you 103 years old. Mr. President, Mr. Campbell is one of the 21st Ward's eldest members and the oldest person here in this chamber. He is a veteran who served from 1939 to 1945 and was gifted and honor-ride in May of 2015 for his service in the Illinois National Guard and the U.S. Army, rising to the rank of Technical Sergeant and a member of the 1st Battalion Headquarters Company. And you know, after his tour of duty, he didn't stop working. He went on to be gainfully employed by the United States, or the United Postal Service for almost 40 years. And, Mr. President, as we work in this body to house Chicago's unhoused, I have to note that Mr. Campbell is one of the first members to purchase his home in the historic Maple Park community that was built for the black community here in Chicago, and 63 years later, he is still at that same address. And yes, Mr. Campbell has many titles. It can be a church deacon, can be a lodge master, but I know that he is proud to be the husband of his wife, May Bell, who he's married to for 75 years. Mr. Campbell is the father of six children, 12 grandchildren, or the grandfather of 12 grandchildren, who his granddaughter, Misty, is accompanying him here today. He has 14 great-grandchildren and one great-great-grandchild. So, Mr. President, as we honor the black excellence of this month during Black History Month, I made sure that the 21st Ward was well-represented in its rich history and all that contributes to the city and beyond, in honoring and recognizing Mr. Edward H. Campbell, Sr. Thank you, sir.
Alderman, I appreciate that. We just, now we have two final speakers for sure, and thank you, Mr. Campbell, for your contribution to the Black Census. So, Alderman Mosley was making a public service announcement, encouraging more black people to have black children, loud and clear. The Chair recognizes Alderman Raymond Lopez.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the City Council. I rise in support of this resolution and this recognition of our guests here, who, through their actions over their lifetime, have contributed not just to the black experience, but to the Chicago experience. Though I wasn't asked, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize some of the pillars of my Ward, representing a diverse Ward that includes many African-Americans, individuals whom, like Fay Dickens, who works at Marquette Elementary Schools, like a den mother for the children, Evangeline Weinubian, who's a frequent attendee of our City Council meetings, resident of West Inglewood, and someone who's worked to ensure that the lived black experience is taught to younger generations. Gwen Johnson, who is one of my senior council members in the community, continues to find ways to build a bridge for seniors in the neighborhood. And Verna Swan, who is a part of We Grow Chicago, continues to find ways to bring people in the neighborhoods together. But as we are sitting here today, and it's the question I pose that's been referenced numerous times, you know, we cannot, Mr. President, simply talk about history, because if we are only looking at what was, we are going to miss what can and should be. We heard from many of our speakers earlier today, including someone whom I personally believe never gets the recognition he deserves for being a part of the living black history, Mr. George Blakemore, who, who though I will be the first to admit, sometimes his words sting, but his passion may be raw, but it is real, because his questions have always resolved, revolved, excuse me, around three things: goods, contracts, and jobs. Mr. Blakemore, like so many before him, like so many here with us today, have always, always advocated... advocated to ensure that Chicago's African-American community, Chicago's Black Chicagoans, are not forgotten, excluded, or left out. So much so, that while we are sitting here today recognizing our heroes, we are currently suing one of them now for speaking out. So, the challenge while I am standing here today, Mr. President, is to you and to your administration to drop the charges against George Blakemore for doing what everyone does on behalf. Thank you. And while we are here, while we are recognizing where we have come, where the Black community has come, yes, we should take note that our mayor, our vice mayor, our treasurer, half the chairman are all African-American, and nearly half of every department head in the city of Chicago is African-American. So, I say to all of you, then what problem is there within the community that we cannot fix? It is fair to say that when you have all the levers of power at your disposal, the only excuse is the one we don't want to say, which is that we are choosing not to uplift when we are in complete control of what can happen. I know some have said I have no right to question. That's fine. But I also was told that I have to do what I have to do to stand up for the Black people. You don't get it both ways in this room, contrary to what everyone seems to think. So, if you want allies to stand up and defend and fight and push to ensure that what everyone else has enjoyed, the community is allowed to enjoy too, then you're going to hear it from people like me, too. Because I represent not just Latinos, but African-Americans as well. And when they come to my ward night, everything that I say here is a reflection of everything they say in my conference room, not two feet in front of me. They want to know why our contracting opportunities are not reflective of their demographics, why all of Latino women, African-American, Asian have to rely on 26 and 6 when African-Americans and Latinos make up 2/3 of this city. Why we are still refusing to have a discussion about the Freedman classification for our bid and contracting opportunities, something that's been brought up now to two different mayors. There is definitely much work to be done, Mr. President. I believe that it can happen. I believe that many of our residents want it to happen, because that is what we should be taking care of, Chicagoans, first and foremost, who've been waiting for their time. This is your time. The question is, who will rise up to meet the moment? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Maria Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to every, every member of our city that's in the box today. Thank you to everybody in the audience today. This Black History Month, I'm going to do that thing that some of my colleagues do that I actually, I don't, I don't know if I've ever said this, I wasn't planning to speak today. Wasn't planning to speak today. Every, every year in February in council, we honor Black Chicagoans, we honor legacies, we honor current works. And as a Black Chicagoan, although a Chicagoan by an adopted city, I, I like to reflect on both the, the role and the space that has been made for me, right, by those who've come before me, and by all the continuing efforts and struggles of the people and the groups and the institutions that I have been a part of and am currently a part of. Chicago is often in the crosshairs of negativity around the country, around the state. They hate us. They hate Chicago. They're always trying to tear Chicago down. And I think one of our biggest challenges within Chicago is how we don't let that become something that's ingrained within us. How do we not tear each other down? How do we not use our public platforms to sow negativity? What are we doing with our time and our energy? I know I'm feeling, I'm feeling a little upset today, because a colleague of mine who just spoke started off the day with some statements on social media that were, you know, there's challenges, we should hold each other accountable, we should challenge one another. I've stood before here and challenged almost each and every one of you, and I would appreciate when folks do the same to me. We've got people in the box who, I think a common theme that we heard from colleagues was, "Thank you for holding us accountable," right, to people in our community, and not just Black Chicago, right, to people in our community, to people in this audience. You're here to hold us accountable. This is what you're here for, and we have to have those standards for ourselves. But there's a fine line in genuine holding someone accountable out of love, out of shared respect, out of wanting to get to a goal together, right? And I know we do hear some things here that can, that can feel hurtful, that can be offensive. But I know a lot of the things that I hear in public comment, I try to listen, I'm always listening, I'm always discerning. What are people really saying? What need are we not meeting, right? We're here in public space, you can throw the tomatoes at us, and in a lot of what people say, there are grains of truth, there are unmet needs, and there are voices of people who we are not listening to. But when we're inside this house, you should be holding yourself accountable. You should not be capitalizing on the pain, on the oppression, and on systemic issues to try and shine a spotlight on your own failures. You can't be part of a group. We are legislators. If you can't pass legislation, if you can't join a group, if you're not welcome, there might be a reason for that. If you're not welcomed into a community, if you're not part of the "we," then please hold your tongue or come with more respect. This body, our city wants us to be accountable. The people here, they expect more from us. And especially for those of us, I don't think there's, there are very few people in this body who haven't fought long and hard for their position. And I know that we oftentimes disagree on things, but I know every single person in this body is here because they really want what's best for their constituents. I know you guys do. That's why we're here. So, we need to show up in that spirit of respect. And on a day, on a day when you know what we're going to be about, you know what today is, on a day when you know what we're here for, in a time where, with so much Black leadership, there are a lot of, there are a lot of dog whistle attacks on stuff, and it is hard to make sure that we can have accountability for a mayor, for a treasurer, for an alderman, right, for, for everybody, while walking the fine line of not falling into that space of you're actually just using this to tear people down. You're using this to tear people down. If you have to use someone else's, your critiques of someone else to lift yourself up, then you're not doing the work that you need to do. So, this Black History Month, I want to lift up the people that are here in this box, the people that are here in this audience, the people that are here on this floor, who show up for Chicagoans every day, who show up for Black Chicagoans every day, and who show up in love and in a spirit of respect and shared goals to make this city better. And again, it's continual work. This is continual work. So, this is not just about history, it is about current times. So, I am honored to be a part of this body. Mr. President, I'm honored to stand in support of this resolution, and I didn't want that to be the final words or the final mouth that spoke today. Thank you.
And to close this resolution, we have one final, final speaker. The Chair recognizes the last speaker for this particular resolution, Alderman Jason Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Alderman Haddon, for your, for your words. Kind of stole some of the words that I was going to say, but I think they have been said, and I think that it's clear what this council thinks, and it's clear that our colleague has overstepped the bound. But we're not going to end on that today. We're going to continue with the honoring of these heroes in our communities on the South and West Side, that are true Chicagoans that have been, through thick and thin, have worked for the betterment of our city. One gentleman that, that I want to speak of, for whatever reason, evades this space even though he has the privilege to sit here amongst us, none other than my predecessor, the former Alderman of the 28th Ward, Alderman Ed Smith, who happens to be sitting behind us and not in the box where he's supposed to be, but I do want to honor him. In the, there's a caucus, West Side Black elected officials, and that Alderman Mitch is our chair, but he is kind of like the godfather of the West Side when it comes to the politics. Having been one of the longest-serving Aldermen, Black Aldermen in our council, serving from 1983 to 2010, 27 and 1/2 years as a member of this body, I continue to ask him if he wants to come back, and he laughs at me and says that, "No, not for $1 million would I come back." But you guys, as young people, it's my job to help guide the next generation. And he meant that to heart. It's very rare, especially in politics, especially amongst African-Americans, that somebody will step aside to bring up the next group. And that is exactly what Alderman Smith has done, when he mentored me, helped me, and essentially launched me into this very body that I'm here today. So, it is with that level of deference and respect that we have for Alderman Smith, for not thinking just about today, but also thinking about tomorrow and what it meant to the community to have a vision, to have leadership moving forward, and that they were not the end-all, be-all of anything that was going to happen on the West Side of Chicago. So, I want to thank you publicly as a mentor, as a father figure, as someone who truly leads by example. He steals, and anybody that knows anything about this man, from the attic to the basement. He knocks on doors, he's out. He was out the other day doing some work in the precinct. So, he's a true, not only a student, but a teacher of all of us in things that we have learned to do, things a lot of us sometimes hate to do, but nonetheless, he led the example for us all. And again, people know him wherever he goes on the West Side and through this city, as someone who was honorable, someone who was concerned and cared about his community, and someone who was a hard worker and continues to work even to this day, even though he's been retired for over 13 years, still out in the community, still part of 28th Ward Democratic Organization, still providing counsel, still providing leadership, but not in a way that does not allow the rest of us to continue to work and move forward. So, today, sir, I honor you. I've never had a chance to publicly, at this floor, say this, I love you, and we appreciate the work that you've done to make this city great. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, there are many names. Thank you all for your contributions to this resolution. There are a number of names that have been read, and I will just emphasize them again. Kenneth Whaley, of course, our honoree today, Edward Campbell, Sr., a member of this great city who also fought in World War II. Wallace Gator Bradley is here. He is the president of United in Peace. We've mentioned Misty Campbell. Portia Ball is here. She's also a West Sider, 37th Ward. Shirley Bryan, and I know Darlene's name has been mentioned, so everyone cue, all of you in the box. You know, since our city was founded by Jean Baptiste Pointe du Sabo, Chicago has been shaped by the achievements and contributions of Black people. And though while we strive to uplift and celebrate our Black residents every day, Black History Month presents us with an opportunity to celebrate the indelible contributions, as well as to honor the sacrifices of those who've came before us, the bravery, fighting for equality, civil rights, and justice for all. Of course, through slavery and segregation, systemic racism, disparities, mass incarceration, Black people somehow managed to love, support, and lift up one another, because we are truly a resilient people. Time and time again, we have witnessed the resilience of Black Americans as we work to overcome the barriers that have stood before us. So, I'm proud to stand here as mayor of the city of Chicago. As we recognize and honor so many people, I think it's also important to note some of the names that were mentioned today, because, you know, Roberta Wilson is a very humble, honest woman, but she marched through Marquette Park with Dr. King. She was a part of the Black educators who, along with Al Raby, invited him to this city to fight for housing, fair housing. It's also, I think, appropriate that Alderman Lamont Robinson mention William Dawson. Just a little social studies history fact, when Anton Cermak decided to run for mayor in '31, I believe, there was a strong anti-immigrant position in Chicago. There was one particular group of immigrants that were dominating the politics. And Anton Cermak convinced William Dawson, for the first time in the history, convinced Black Chicagoans to leave the Republican Party and join the Democratic Party to fight for a pro-immigrant, anti-Black, and pro-Black liberation movement that ultimately built a progressive coalition between Black and Brown people. That's the legacy of Anton Cermak that led to the most powerful Black politician right here in the city of Chicago being formed. And so, I think it's important that even though we, we believe that this is the first time that the city of Chicago has ever experienced turmoil, be very clear, the resistance that we are experiencing now is not new. But what I can tell you without a shadow of a doubt, that the city of Chicago will be better and stronger and safer, because we have a long history of Black liberation ensuring that. So, with that, I salute all of you in the box, and Happy Black History Month. Just going to give the box a few moments to clear out, okay? As the box clears out, Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for the passage of this resolution?
Mr. President, I move passes in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. This resolution is passed. Hearing no objections, so ordered, this resolution is passed. Okay, this meeting will come back to order as the box continues to clear out. Our next resolution will be honoring the legacy of the Divine Nine. And so as these members clear out, and members from the Divine Nine, please approach the box. As the members of the box clear out, I do would like, if I could just have, just quiet for a second, please. I do think it's appropriate at this point, for those of who may not be aware, for the first time in the history of Chicago, the transition of power from one black executive to another, that happened. And so it is in that spirit, as we recognize the leadership of the former mayor, Lori Lightfoot, we are also grieving with her today as she lost her mother. So I would just ask this body, as we prepare to transition to the next resolution, if we could just honor the former mayor of the City of Chicago, just in a moment of silence for Ann Lightfoot. Right. The Divine Nine, honoring the legacy, if there are any Alders that wish to speak to this resolution, this will be the moment to do that. Okay. The Chair recognizes Alderman Desmond Yancey.
Yeah, I rise in support of this resolution. I am not a member of the Divine Nine, but I want to shout out some folks that are influential in my life. My cousin Nathaniel Prevost, who was the first college graduate in my family, who pledged Alpha Phi Alpha at Texas Southern Uni, I'm sorry, Prairie View A&amp;M University. My cousin James Pickett, who did the same at Western Illinois University. And then, of course, my chief of staff, Charles Kyle, and Jabari Knox, who works at the Clerk's Office, and all of the members of the Divine Nine represented here today. Thank you all for your service, your dedication to blackness and uplifting all of us. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Pat Dowell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to be associated with this resolution, celebrating the black fraternities and sororities that comprise the Divine Nine, and say congratulations to all of you in the box today. I am a proud member, a new member, of the esteemed Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated Sorority, which celebrated its 111th anniversary in January, professing the theme, Forward with Faith, Fortitude, and Social Action. Our sorority was founded at Howard University in 1913, and we have a rich history of social activism and community involvement, not only during Black History Month, but all year round, all year long. With us today in the box, we have our dynamic president, Shauna C. Curry, who is president of the Chicago, of the Chicago Alumni Committee Chapter. Please stand. And Barbara Keaton Stuberfield, who is our first vice president. Please stand. Carla Pollard, our second vice president. Adrienne Bryant Roberts, who many of you know as a former executive in the fire department, but she is now the co-chair of our International Awareness and Involvement Committee. Karen Freeman Wilson, who is the president and CEO of Chicago Urbans League. And someone who was with us today, but is not here now, Cook County Commissioner Tara Stamps, who is a soror of our esteemed sorority. These dynamic women lead and uplift Delta Sigma Theta as we strive to meet our commitment in areas such as civil rights, women's rights, and education. So today, we celebrate you and everyone else as that's part of the Divine Nine, and this is our day. Thank you.
Thank you. To the Sigmas, Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Alderman Walter Burnett.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also rise in support of this resolution to honor the Divine Nine. And I just want to thank each organization for giving African-American men and women a fraternity to be a part of and a sorority to be a part of, to help not only keep them on track while in college, but also to be able to have a good time and have brotherhood and sisterhood. But also, further than that, want to commend all of you all for becoming role models in our community, being those role models that encourage more young African-American men and women to want to go to college, to want to be successful, because all of you all are successful and always are reaching back. You know, our fraternity Phi Beta Sigma, and of course, our sisters Zeta Phi Beta, with the Sigmas, we believe in brotherhood, scholarship, and service. Our motto is culture for service and service for humanity. I think about some of the great Sigmas that have been in this town who's not with us now, like our former mayor, Earl Washington, and also former Justice Freeman. And there's many, many others in our society that are doing good. Matter of fact, a lot of my brothers, who are part of my group, are either working for the Park District, or working for violence prevention, or our school teachers, or police officers. Matter of fact, some of the police officers in this building are Sigmas, and probably a lot of other fraternities, because all of us grow up in these fraternities and are involved in these fraternities, learn about giving back and helping. So I just want to commend each and every one of you all for not just being role models, but also being that example to let everyone in our community know that you can be successful, but you also can reach back and help somebody else to be successful also. God bless you and thank you for being here today. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes, does Alderwoman Harris wish to be recognized? The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Michelle Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank Stephanie Coleman, for, of course, she is the queen of all things Greek, so here at City Council, so thank you for your leadership on this. Today, I just want to acknowledge three of my sisters that are here with us today before I thank everybody else for being here. Gloria Pittman, who is one of our deputy commissioners in Streets of Sanitation, is here. Soror Gloria Pittman. Soror Alyssa Johnson and Soror Tammy Morgan are here with us today to round up the AKAs. I want to thank the Divine Nine. I want to thank my sister Deltas for everything that you do. You, along with all your commitment to service, is simply amazing. So I want to thank you all for working hard and for doing, taking care of our city. For my other sisters that are here, thank you for service, because at the heart of every Greek is that background of service and that give-back message. Nobody is Greek. Everybody has it in their mission, that we are to give back. And we couldn't all be so successful without that ability to give back and to pass it on. So today, to all my Greek brothers and sisters, I say thank you for that give-back mentality, because if we ever needed it, we need it now. And so what you do today in passing it on will help save generations of African-American men and women, and it'll be transformative. So my brothers and my sisters from the Divine Nine, thank you for what you do. I cannot appreciate you enough for all the hard work that you do. And don't think because people don't say something, they see it. They see it. So again, thank you for loving our children and making it possible for women to come in and be a part of something bigger. Thank you. And for my brothers, the same thing. Thank you all for passing it on.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the council for recognizing all of our brothers and sisters of the Divine Nine. To my sororities, I'm looking at seven sororities that have not only dedicated their lives to all mankind, but we are all serving the City of Chicago, and that is something to be commended. I'm looking at the first African-American general counsel here for the City Council, Sor Mary and Deputy and Monique. I'm sorry, gosh. And Natasha, and Lori, and Carissa, and Tammy, and Dr. Alicia, and Commissioner Gloria Pittman. And to my devastating divas of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, we are so grateful, as you all have, the motto of intelligence is the torch of wisdom. And then I have to go on to the SG roles, where greater service and greater progress. And then to the finer women like Judge Blakely here, and my friend LaShem Kate Graham, where scholarship service, sisterly love, and finer sisterhood has been the motto. And to all of our Greek brothers, and I know you will be recognized by way of our Greek but two, Alpha Phi Alpha and Omega Psi Phi and Kappa, the noobs, we're just so grateful for the service. While we all wear different colors, we're all about service. And it's like being a member of a different church, no matter your religion. We all are to serve God and serve those and be a role model for the next Delta, for the next AKA, for the next Zeta, and Q, and Nu, and SG role. I would like to challenge our Divine Nine, as studies have come that black women are the number-one victims of crime. And to all of the sororities and fraternities, we make up 16% of Chicago population, however, we are 39% of every violent crime here in the City of Chicago. And it is upon us to work with the women of this council, the African-American women of this council, and the entire council, for us to change that narrative, President Karen Freeman Wilson, that we will be working with your great organization, Chicago Urban League. But I want to impress upon you all, to help us help our community, and help us help black women, the backbone of this, not only this city, but of the nation. Congratulations and thank you for being of service to this great city of Chicago.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm honored to stand in support of this resolution. Some of you who haven't heard this little speech before might be wondering why I'm getting up to do this. I went to Indiana University, founding home of Cap Alpha Psi, by the way, for anybody who didn't know that. I did, because I went to school there. And as a young person from the city who'd gone to magnet and selective enrollment schools, who had the advantage, frankly, of having the experience of having learned side-by-side with kids that were different from me, and I went to school at Indiana University in the middle of cornfields, where there was not a whole lot of diversity. And when someone would come into the cafeteria and ask, well, why are all the black kids sitting together at the same table? Why are the Asian kids sitting at the same table? I said, well, do we ever ask why the white kids are sitting together? I found kinship, for sure, having gone to public school here in Chicago and then, again, in college. And as I met Asian-American women, especially, and we were trying to find our way, the Divine Nine were there for us, to inspire us. And I want to pick up on something that Chair Harris said, and it's this commitment to service that where we found the most sort of kinship in all of that. So as we were deciding what to do, my six founding members and I, because we founded the first Asian sorority at Indiana University, that's still there today, out of the inspiration that we got from all of you and the things that you've been able to accomplish, and your work knows no bounds. Obviously, with the leadership here in the city and in this room, your legacy and your fingerprints and footprints are all over what's good in this city. So thank you for your continued service. Thank you for all that you do to inspire young people and others to do well and do good for this community that we love so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
I'm gonna try this. I say the Zetas. She didn't play along, but that's okay. I love that song. I have to stand up, because, first of all, let me start with the brothers. My WIU alum, raise your hand, man, good to see you. And where did John just go? John Roberson, another Omega man. One thing I push in our community is for our Greeks, organizations to be involved in the community, not just, you know, dance, not just be seen, but to be involved. And I see that with these two great men standing here. When I'm out in that community, Joel, he's out in that community. John is out in that community. And that's what it's all about, not just having three letters attached to you, but being able to go out there and have an impact on our young people. You all are doing that, and I want to say thank you so much. Let me get, I just want to highlight, and the women do that as well, but I got to give my men a shout-out, because when men stand up, it makes a difference. To the ladies, especially, to Delta Sigma Theta is a close place in my heart. Because of my sister, who I still miss, even to this day in mourning, because when you lose somebody unexpectedly, and then you left an only child too, it's not a good thing. But Delta Sigma Theta was a big part of her family, and you all have done so much to continue to keep her name out there through your diabetes walks, your health walk, and everything. So I want to thank you for recognizing my sister Bernadette Tompkins each and every year. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Greg Mitchell.
Thank you, Chairman. I rise with pride to be associated with this ordinance, I mean, with this resolution. I'm a proud member of the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated by way of the Gamma Gamma Chapter Spring of 1990. My life changed February 19, 1990. A group of men embraced me as their brothers, because I didn't grow up with brothers, had all sisters, no brothers. And through my travels as an Omega, I have more mentors, uncles, fathers, that have been so influential in my life that I wouldn't be where I am or what I am today without Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. And there's three brothers that's in the room, I want to acknowledge. I got one of my big brothers, president of the Divine Nine, Joe Harris. I got the city's chief operating officer, John Roberson. And I got my man, the Kimber man, Big Terrance Craven. Thank you for being good brothers to me. And Joe, you know what, I was green when I came back to Chicago, but you got me together, you and the rest of the brothers. Also want to give a shout-out to my ladies. I adore all my sororities. I adore all my sororities. I also, it's real interesting about Alpha Kappa Alpha. My kindergarten teacher was AKA. My first grade teacher was an AKA. My second grade teacher was an AKA. My third grade teacher was an AKA. All my teachers through grammar school were AKAs. My counselor that felt, you know, I needed to transfer, so she gave me the choice to either go to Kenwood or Whitney Young, I chose Kenwood. And then when I got in high school, the Delta stepped in. My division, swim teacher, gym teacher, all Deltas. And then when I got to college, uh-oh, Sigma Gamma Chi, couple of Zetas came into my life. And just like I wouldn't be where I am today without being a member of the influence of the members of Omega Psi Phi, the sororities, the ladies of those sororities contributed to my life as well. You know, congratulations on this day. I don't need to get into service because that's a given. I done cleaned up side of roads in the country picking up possums and that's the kind of service we had down there. But yeah, I'm not gonna get too long winded, but this is, I'm the first Greek in my family, first Omega, subsequently made some people after that in my family. And thank you, big brothers. Thank you, brothers. And thank you, sisters, for being who you are and contributing to my life. I wouldn't be who I am today without the Divine Nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Those are all the individuals that, so there is one more that wishes to speak. If there's anyone else after this one, please indicate that you wish to be added. If not, our final speaker then will be, Chair recognizes Alderman Lamont Robinson.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I rise in honor of this resolution. I'm a proud member of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated, founded on January 5th, 1911 at Indiana University. Mr. Mayor, it was my late father who was a Chicago building supervisor here at the city of Chicago who, as I mentioned before, passed away in between my junior and senior year of high school. It was his fraternity brothers that wrapped their arms around me and kept me on the right track. I grew up again between King Drive and Cottage Grove and Chairwoman Harris spent more time on Cottage than I should have been on King Drive. But again, because of those brothers, I am who I am today. Our motto is achievement in every field of endeavor. And I'm also a proud member of the first Chicago Alumni Chapter in our entire fraternity that was founded on April 17th, 1919. I have today our Pole Mark, Tavious Jackson. For the Pole Mark, will you please stand and be recognized? As I mentioned a little earlier, it takes a village to elevate our community. And in the 20th Ward, my sister's ward, Chicago alumni have done a couple of great things. Not only have they built out a food pantry that feeds folks weekly, not only in the African American community in the 20th Ward, but from all walks of life. They have an annual Christmas gift event to make sure that the youth, not only in the 20th Ward, but across the city of Chicago on Christmas, Mr. Mayor, have toys to open up, making sure that sisters and brothers that need warm clothing items like gloves and hats, scarves. And then an organization for eight years that I led called the Kappa Leadership Institute, Mr. Mayor, that has sent hundreds of African American boys to colleges all across the country, mentoring these young men out of Kenwood High School, keeping them like me on the right track, not only sending them to college, sending them to college with money in their pocket, making sure they matriculate through with little to no debt. And being like Walter Burnett Jr., who has gone to one of the top colleges in the country, giving back to society. It is something that we do. You see, again, it takes a village, Mr. Mayor, to do what we do for the city of Chicago and particularly the African American community. And so I'm honored to recognize my great fraternity that has given me an honor to represent my community, to be a mentor to young boys all across the city of Chicago, to be in the Illinois House, to be an Alderman of the city of Chicago. It is again because of achievement in every field of human endeavor. Mr. Mayor, before I take my seat, I would also recognize the other fraternity and sororities that are here today. Thank you for your great work that you do for your organizations as well as the city of Chicago. I would be remiss if I did not honor the former mayor of Gary, Indiana, President of the Chicago Urban League. Thank you for the work that you do to elevate our community 365 days a year. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman Robinson. So that concludes our speakers. I believe most of the names have been called, so thank you again. No Cook County Commissioner Tara Stamps had to leave. Barbara Keaton, thank you. Shawna C. Curry for being here. Carla Adrian, Judge Tiana S. Blakely from Zeta Phi Beta Sorority. Thank you for the acknowledgement. Alderman Moore of Joel Harris. Christina, Mr. Jackson was honored, Gloria, Carl Bryant, and of course, former mayor of Gary, Indiana, Dr. Freeman. So Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for the passage of this resolution?
Mr. President, I move passage to be omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. What, before we provide the proclamation, the Divine Nine, I just wanted to say that the collective historically black fraternities and sororities have left an incredible mark on our nation's history, the culture and the influence that black men and women have provided for this city. Each fraternity and sorority within Divine Nine is unique, but together has been expressed their collective response and commitment to not just academic excellence, but to community service is what makes them that much more divine. And so these members take tremendous strides to improve the lives of all Americans through their service, through education and through scholarships. I am so proud and grateful that we have such an incredible group of fraternities and sororities that make up the greatest city in the world. All right, y'all, don't go too far. We have one more still. Hold on. All right, our final resolution. Our final resolution will honor the 157th anniversary Morehouse College. Are there any Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? The Chair recognizes Alderman Will Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in honor of this resolution as a member of the Morehouse Board of Preachers and also as a friend and a colleague of Alderman Scott and my friend and colleague Reverend Javon Moore who's watching. My friend, my brother, Cor. I just want to say that Morehouse has made so many men better. And I thank God for all of you, those who I know individually, but collectively, the nation of Morehouse has made the nation better. And so I just want to say thank you, brothers, for carrying the motto and thank you for carrying the mission and the message in these trying times. Thank God for Morehouse.
Thank you. Sorry, I thought that Alderwoman Scott wanted to say something, but I guess she can't do that publicly. Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Alderman Walter Burnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I rise in support of this resolution just to commend this great school. You know, the thing about Morehouse, you can tell a Morehouse man walking a mile away because they step up with so much pride. Some folks, when you see them, you think they arrogant, but it's not that they arrogant is that they've been groomed to be proud of who they are and they stand on it because they're educated, they're sharp, and they do a lot of great things. I just want to commend everybody that I know that's a Morehouse man is very proud and very successful. So I commend you all on all of the success that you all have made and the legacy that you have given our society over the years. Congratulations to you all.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak? The Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, for giving us this opportunity to recognize these great gentlemen here and the fine institution of Morehouse. Many of us didn't have an opportunity to go there for many different reasons, but many of us wanted to attend there. And I think Vice Mayor Burnett said it so eloquently in his statements. And so for me, I want to definitely give a shout out to my brother who's online, my nephew, really, my god nephew, Javon Moore, who is not only a preacher, but a businessman doing great work as a Morehouse man. Jamel Chambers, man, the level of respect and the service that you give to us as Aldermen is just great. There are people who are supposed, are in certain roles and they call me, I don't deal with them. I go to go-to people and you are a go-to person because you're responsive and you deliver. And for that, I appreciate you. Also, not here, my brother Tony Tidwell, who's a Morehouse man, doing great work as a lawyer. So all these positive things and for Morehouse men. Our friend and our, we say former colleague, but once an Alderman in this council is always an Alderman. Mike Scott, I appreciate you so much for the work that you did in this council, but also for what you're doing outside this council. And yes, I always sometimes have to leave the best for last, and that's my brother, my friend, Zed McLauren, who we've known each other for more than whatever years that is. We'll leave that alone. But thank you for your leadership in this city. I recognize you last only because of our friendship, because you are someone who truly believes in development and know about what it means to build in this city and throughout this country. And so I appreciate you for the work that you're doing to make Chicago a better place to live with the development that you do throughout this city. And we're gonna continue to push development because when people are having jobs, then people don't have to be homeless. People don't have to be on the street because they have a hammer and tool in their hand and they're building generational wealth that way. So I appreciate all of you. I appreciate Morehouse for their leadership and the things that they have done for our city by giving us such great men. God bless you and thank you so much, Mr. President.
Any other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution before I offer deference to the one and the only? Okay, if, oh, there are two more Alders that wish to speak before the one and the only closes out. Alderman Scott is determined not to say anything, I guess because she helped him with all his homework for all those years there. Chair recognizes Alderman Jason Irvin.
Thank you. I will say this. The institution has definitely produced a lot of great men in our community. We talk about Dr. King all the time. We talk about some of the other greats that have been, that have come from Morehouse. But I had a very good conversation with Ambassador Andrew Young when he was here about six months ago. And this is kind of an interesting line that he said. He says, "You can always tell a Morehouse man," he said, "but you can't tell him much," was what was stated. And my friend and colleague to the South, Alderman Scott, he and I had plenty of conversations and debates. And when Mr. Young, Ambassador Young stated that, it finally clicked because I was dealing with it all the time with my gentleman from the South, Alderman Scott, who has been a fine example for the West Side of Chicago, helping us. And he continues to work in the community, still doing things. So I want to commend the work that he's done in the community and also thankful that his sister did help him with his homework so that he was able to graduate on time and be of good service for us in the community. But thank you all for the work that you all do and the men that you all have produced in our community that are continuing to serve and service our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman.
Then to the distinguished man of this wonderful institution, I say Morehouse men are the other fraternity because certainly there is just a class of dignity, integrity when I see a Morehouse man, young and old. To my favorite developer, Mr. Zed McLauren, I thank you for not being one of the Morehouse men that you can't tell much to as we have collaborated and Inglewood Connect will certainly come to light under this mayor and truly what investing in Inglewood means. To my former colleague, LS Alderman Michael Scott, Jamel, and I see some Kappa men, this brother right here, distinguished new. Just thank you all as your theme, your motto is developing men with disciplined minds who would lead lives of leadership and service. To every one of you, I see that, I know that, being, working with you from the eldest to the youngest, so proud of you to our president and the work you're doing at CPS, but being the president of this Alumni Association and keeping on that distinguished gentleman and always being sharp because certainly young men see us before they hear us. And one thing about a Morehouse man, you will see him. Thank you all.
Thank you, Alderwoman. And finally, to close, the distinguished gentleman from the 21st Ward, Chair recognizes Alderman Ronnie Mosley.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, in 1867, on February 4th,
You know, in 1867, on February 4th, God once again showed His love for the world and created Morehouse College. And just like our motto, et facta, et lux, Morehouse man came to Chicago, so did light. Let me remind folks that we are an institution that has produced five Rhodes Scholars, a name that we have rung out throughout this month, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who has a national holiday and a monument on our nation's Capitol. And that work didn't just stop with Dr. King, you see it in Chicago when you talk about L- L- Laron Bennett Jr., the senior editor of Ebony Magazine, who even challenged us at times, though, think about the work that Ebony and Jed and those magazines did when the death and the murder of Emmett Louis Till. And I say Louis because that's the middle name that my mother gave me. I think about the inspiration that we get from the Reverend Thomas Dorsey, who founded Gospel Music, and how it inspires us. And when we talk about gospel, we can go on and on about the luminary preachers, the revines, your pastors like Reverend Dr. Otis Moss III, my classmate Reverend Reggie Sharp at Fellowship. You can talk about Andrew Hun and Devon Brown and Gary Foster. Work you see is done throughout the institutions of Chicago. As we mentioned, Jamel Chambers, who works with CPS. And we mentioned Mike Merchant, who works with Chicago Park District. Your favorite developer you heard, Zed McLauren. You think about the leadership that's even on the campus of Morehouse College, whether it's John Watson, who's here today, Michael Laveskew, a great mentor to me, the man who taught me business in high school, or even Jim Castleberry, who is leading the Capitol campaign that's ushering Morehouse into its new future, even though it's had a great 157 years. There are brothers who are in the box like Mike Bennett, who brought a UPS store to the south side of Chicago. Imagine my surprise when I went to go turn my Amazon package and found out I didn't have to travel all the way to 95th and Kenzie, but I can go to 83rd and Stewart. My dear brother Corey Hardeman, who started a alternative spring break, bringing the Morehouse, again, that mystique here to Chicago. Having our young brothers do something else besides going to beaches and enjoying that hot weather, but the service that we were all called to. That service that was produced by great presidents like the ninth president of Morehouse College, Dr. Massey, Walter E. Massey, Walter Eugene Massey, who gave his time and talent to Chicago, serving as the board president of City Colleges. And I think about our first black president of Morehouse College, John Hope, Dr. John Hope, and the inspiration and the legacy that he leaves here in the media with Leah Hope at ABC7. I think about Dr. Benjamin Elijah Mays, true luminary in education, so much so that there is a school in Chicago named after him. And of course, I think about a great Chicagoan who was the 10th president of Morehouse College. President who taught me, Dr. Robert Michael Franklin Jr., who graduated from Morgan Park before he went on to Morehouse College and gave me the ultimate charge. Because each president will tell you their mission for the man that they are developing. Walter Massey said, "Redefine yourself and you will redefine the world." It was Dr. Franklin who challenged us to be Renaissance man, man of a social conscience, with a global perspective to uplift and serve, and he just didn't give us that mission, he gave us the blueprint. He said, "I want you to be well-read, well-dressed, well-spoken, well-traveled, and well-balanced." And so you see, yes, 157 years later, that Morehouse mystique is still alive. It still exudes from every Morehouse man that you meet. And to show ever, continue. So, Mr. President, I'm glad that we take time today to honor Morehouse College, a historically black college and university. And as the some will question if there's still a need for HBCUs, yes, there is still a need, and it is still great. And what it produces is excellence, just like Morehouse College, the international headquarters of black male excellence. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you. So again, thank you, Mr. Chambers, Mr. Bryant, Alderman, Mr. Michael Scott Jr., Mr. Jones, Cornell, Mr. Burley, Mr. Michael Lavesk, Everett Fournay, thank you for your leadership, Mr. Watson, Mr. Hardeman, Zed, Mr. McLauren, Mr. Bennett. Thank you all. This, this resolution is, is an opportunity for us to recognize this real beacon, beacon of light, a beacon of learning and empowerment for black men, but also, as Alderman Burnett said, it's a source of pride. The alumni of Morehouse have blazed trails across sectors of, a variety of fields of study. They've broken down barriers and have proved that excellence knows no bounds. That includes, of course, the Chicago Alumni Association. I support this resolution, but I think it's important that we recognize that the mark that these men are making on communities in providing hope and direction for posterity is really what makes this institution remarkable. And so to the Morehouse men who consistently demonstrate their unique ability to change the world with their leadership through service, it is unmatched. Thank you to the Chicago Alumni Association, and congratulations for 157 years. Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion to pass this resolution?
Mr. President, I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Congratulations to the Morehouse men. Alderman Mitchell, on a motion to adjourn? No, I'm just teasing, just teasing. All right, Communications, next up, Communications, but let's give folks just a quick moment. Oh, we do have to return to the regular order of business.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Yep. All right, next up, Communications, Madam Clerk.
Communications from His Honor, the Mayor, to the Honorable, the City Council of City Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Comptroller to transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the issuance up to $1.25 billion in general obligation and/or sales tax securitization corporation bonds for economic development and affordable housing programs. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Lance, ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner, sorry, who? Oh, okay. Two committees called at once, it will go to rules, referred to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing and Transportation here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a loan restructuring agreement with Halsted Limited Partnership. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing and Transportation here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a loan restructuring agreement with Hollywood House Limited Partnership. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development and Transportation here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of amended redevelopment agreement with Chicago Corp- Corporative to provide TIF funds. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development and Transportation here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended redevelopment agreement with Portage Park Capital LLC to provide TIF funds for improvements at 3657 North Central Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development and Transportation here with ordinances authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreements with the Chicago Park District to provide TIF funds for improvements at various city parks. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Aviation and Transportation here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a technical service agreement, National Renewable Energy Laboratory. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Aviation. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with a Fund 925 Amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request our Commissioner, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the provision of a favorable tax incentives to various properties within the city. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the sale of city-owned properties. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Transportation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. Your, your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Transportation in Public Way. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Julie Hernandez Tomlin as the Commissioner of Department of Fleet and Facility Management. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Section 2-80-070 of the Municipal Code of Chicago, I've appointed Adrian M. Johnson as a member of District Council 001 to fill a current vacancy. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Police and Fire. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Roberto Recchio as, as a member of the CTA, or Chicago Transit Board, for a term of effective media and expiring September 1st, 2029, to succeed Alejandro Silva, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Transportation in Public Way. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various service support, or special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments be approved, are be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the City Colleges Board. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Education and Child Development. I, City Clerk Valencia, inform the City Council of the call for the special meeting and the documents related thereto, which were considered by the City Council as a special meeting held on February 15th, 2024, which were required by statute to be published in a book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on February 21st, 2024, by being printed in full text pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings of the City Council of City of Chicago. I, City Clerk Valencia, also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action. Claims against the City of Chicago, which refer to the Committee on Finance. Recommendation by Commissioner of Chicago Landmarks for designation of Phoebe and John Gray House at 4362 West Grace Street at Chicago Landmark, which is referred to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications from the Mayor and the Office and the City, other City Officers.
Thank you very much. We now will go to our committee reports. For our committee reports, the Chair recognizes our Finance Chairwoman, Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which held a committee meeting on February 14th, 2024, the following items received a due-pass recommendation from the committee. Item number one is the substitute ordinance concerning the issuance of financial assistance for the Parkside Phase III Affordable Housing Project at 500 through 520 West Hobby Street, 542, 558 through 76 West Elm Street, 1101 through 29 North Cambridge Avenue, and 1100 through 20, 1128 North Cleveland Avenue in the 27th Ward, in the amount of up to $4.25 million in multifamily funding and up to $16.4 million in TIF. Mr. President, unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Seeing no hands, members, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open, the voting is now open. Please use your e-device, the voting is now open. All right, I will now call on those that may be virtual or have not voted yet. Alderwoman Gutierrez, not, oh. Alderwoman Gutierrez is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez, Rodriguez is a yes. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez.
Yes.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderperson Clay, not present. Alderwoman Silverstein.
Yes.
Silverstein is yes, the voting is now closed.
There are 49 yeas, zero nays, so this matter has passed. Alderman Mitchell, move to reconsider this vote?
Mr. President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor to reconsider this vote signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no, this motion fails. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number two is the substitute ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for the provision of tax increment financing funds for an artificial turf multipurpose field and related improvements at Percy Julian High School at 10330 South Elizabeth in the 21st Ward in the amount of $3.5 million. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good, again, good afternoon, members of the City Council. I rise today while I support my colleagues, and I am going to vote in support of this investment in the 21st Ward. I have serious concerns, as do many of my colleagues in this room, about the decisions being made with little or no regard for our concerns here in this room by the Board of Education, particularly as it involves removing security resource officers unilaterally, regardless of what the elected local school councils have said at those individual schools. I'm bringing this up in this, under this item because the Chicago Board of Education routinely asks through its Aldermen for money through TIF to support their capital improvement projects because they do not invest enough dollars in those projects themselves. If we are to continue as a body to provide millions of dollars to the Chicago Board of Education, they need to be warned that refusing to listen to us can lead us down a path where members in this room may choose not to be supportive of those investments. I have schools that rely on TIF, whether I want them improved or upgraded, and I know that it is a time-honored tradition in this room to work with each other to try to address this. But this is a part, this is part of a larger conversation going on in this city right now, where an unelected body is unilaterally making decisions that will negatively impact our communities. We cannot afford to ignore that fact. And while I will stand in support today, Mr. President and Madam Chairman, I cannot guarantee the next time we have a report that includes the Finance, TIP, uh, Finance Committee TIF report request for the Board of Education that I will be in support then. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this item? Hearing no objections, motion on the floors to pass this with a Hearing no objections, the motion on the floor is to pass this with the same favorable roll call that was applied to the first item from, from this very committee. So hearing no other objections, so ordered. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number three is an ordinance concerning an amended redevelopment agreement for Team Pioneros LLC to provide TIF funds for the redevelopment of the former Pioneer Bank Building at 4,000 through 4,008 West North Avenue in the 26th Ward in the amount of $13 million. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Item number four and five consist of orders of authorization for the payment of various small claims against the City of Chicago and denial of payments of various small claims against the City of Chicago. If there are no objections, I move that these items be placed for passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Item number six is the report of cases in which verdicts, judgments, or settlements were entered into for the month of January 2024. This will be placed on file with the clerk. Item number 7A is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Kevin Lusk versus Philip Renault and the City of Chicago in the amount of $195,000. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 7B is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Ayesha Hurston versus City of Chicago Darren Easterday, star number 935, in his capacity as a private citizen, as well as in his official capacity as a City of Chicago Police Sergeant, in the amount of $400,000. I move passage of this item by the same motion with the exception of all, exception of Alderman Quinn, who wishes to be recorded as voting no.
Are there, I see hands, the Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
I would like to be recorded as a no as well.
Please, um, please mark Alderman Gardner as a no. Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please hold me as a no as well.
Napolitano, Alderman Napolitano would also like to be recorded as a no. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Clay.
Good afternoon, President. I would like to be recorded as a yes vote for the-
To the first favorable roll call.
Roll call, yes, thank you.
Please add Alderwoman Clay as a yes to the first favorable roll call report out of Finance Committee. Hearing no other objections, despite the division, this motion carries. So ordered.
Item number 7C is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Tony Pearson versus City of Chicago by and through its authorized agents and employees, including but not limited to Matthew McGurney and Michael, excuse me, Michael McGurney, and Michael McGurney individually cited as 2019 L. 73747 in the amount of $425,000. I move passage of this item by the same motion with the exception of Alderman Quinn, who wishes to be recorded as voting no.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could be recorded as no on this item.
Please add Alderman Lopez as a no to this item. Alderman Gardner, would you like to be added as a no? Are there any other alders that wish to be added as a no? Napolitano, please, Tabarez, please add, for good measure, Alderman Riley. Despite the division, seeing no other hands, hearing no other objections, so ordered.
And item number 7D is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Forrestine Williams as independent administrator of the estate of Martina Stanley versus City of Chicago Officer Brian Green, badge number 5601, in the amount of $3.25 million. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you very much. For our next committee, the Chair recognizes Chairman of Budget and Government Operations, Chairman Irvin.
Mr. President, and members of the Council reporting for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on February 20th, 2024. Committee has a series of reports, recommended passage of the following items. Item number one is the appointment of Alfonso Connor Jr. as Commissioner of the Department of Water Management. Uh, Mr. President, I was urged right close.
Are there any other aldermen who wish to speak to this proposed appointment? Chair recognizes Alderman Brian Hopkins.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I just want to commend you for this appointment. Welcome back, Commissioner. You've done so much for the city in so many different capacities, but your, your most recent experience, I think, navigating a department through some turbulent times speaks for itself, and I have 100% confidence in you and your leadership in this role. I look forward to working with you in the future, as we have in the past. Congratulations, welcome back, and we're delighted to support this outstanding appointment, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Alderman Walter Burnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I also rise in support of this appointment. I think this is a great choice. Thank God that, uh, that, um, Alfonso, is it Alonso?
Alfonso.
Alfonso, Alfonso Randy, as we know him, was willing to come back. I appreciate that, and I, and I would be remiss, after the, after the Divine Nine came, I was remiss for not mentioning my Sigma brother, who Randy is. He's also a Sigma also, but also we travel the same way. Both of us travel to the East. But, uh, I, uh, just want to commend this appointment, Mr. Mayor. You couldn't have picked a better person. If anybody know where all the bodies are buried, know how to get things back on track, know how the budgets are, know how to deal with all of the other departments, Randy is the one to not only, to not only help the department that he's going to be in, but also help the other departments in the city of Chicago, because he been there, he done that, and he can get the job done. We are all so very secure knowing that Randy is going to be there, because we know that when we need something and when we call, it's going to get done. Congratulations.
Thank you. Before I recognize Alderman Shay, I just, well Shay, I just want OIG to know, there are no buried bodies. None. Please tweet that. Chair recognizes Alderman Matt O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this appointment. I go back with Randy pretty, pretty far back. In fact, I, for many who's worked with his uncle Al Connor back in the day, um, for those of us that have been around, Randy has always been hands-on. And I saw this up close and personal a few weeks ago. I had a very serious water main break after a, an accident in my community. There were hundreds of 19th Ward residents without water. It was about 10 degrees out. Randy, Commissioner Connor was out there in the early morning hours, was out there with his crew, getting the job done, getting people's water restored. I think that's what all of us want. You want a leader of a department who stands with the men and women who work for him. That's who Randy Connor is. I stand in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Maria Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in support of this appointment. So as a, as a new alderperson, I did have the opportunity to work with you for a short time last term. I don't have much to say, other than I'm thrilled you're back. I'm, I'm really excited about your leadership. We oftentimes have lots of debate and conversation around heavy policy issues, and a lot of times what our constituents may not read about in the paper is what we're dealing with in our wards, right, which come down to our core services, and the Department of Water Management is just one of those things that is so important that we get right. So excited to get to work under your leadership with your team, and thank you for coming back.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Derek Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Commissioner, we'll have to validate Vice, Vice, uh, Mayor soon. You know what we're going to do to him. No. But, uh, Mayor, this was a great, great appointment. He came up through the ranks. He's been through every department. Again, nobody knows it better. I love to see people from Chicago doing the work of the people. He's, he's been a public servant forever, and, uh, uh, the Water Department, actually any department, they respect everything that he do because he came up through the ranks. He knows exactly what to do. Great appointment, Mayor. Glad you're back. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Emma Mitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this, um, appointment. Randy, welcome back. I just learned that your name was Alfon, Alonso. Alfonso. I'm like, who is that? We've been saying Randy all this time? Why you never corrected us with your name? But I want to say thank you for meeting with us. I'm looking very forward to working along with you. As you know, we are still struggling from the flood, and your team have met with us. We're still trying to work out, uh, some of the issues. Some of the families in the ward yet have not been recovered, 200 and some. And, um, your job is helping us to figure out how, what we can do moving forward, because it's not going to stop raining. So, uh, I'm looking forward to working along with you, and thank you for coming back, because I know you know, and I won't say that word, you said, Walter, where, where things need to go, um, so that we can make, put it in place and make it happen for all of the residents in the ward. We're counting on the department, the knowledge that you have, and with Water Rec and all of the others, because that's, that's really a heartbreaker to me. And as we celebrating everything, and everything come up in the council, my mind is on the constituents in the ward, who are breathing in all of that mold yet. So thank you for being here, looking forward to continuing to working with you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderman William Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand too, uh, in rise of this appointment, thanking you for picking a man of faith. And thank you, Commissioner. Already, just 30 minutes ago, we had a situation and circumstance, and you already have resolved it, and so thank you for being a bridge over troubled water, and I'm looking forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
It's very, very profound, Alderman, there. It's going to be the new motto for your department if you get appointed. All right, the Chair recognizes Alderman Gil Villegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in full support of this appointment. Um, you know, when you think about the infrastructure departments, water or transportation, I view them as economic departments, uh, where there's tons of construction that's going on, and I can tell you that I'm glad to see that a manager is back in charge and not a water purifier, because when you're running a department, you need to make sure that you're actually performing the work necessary to provide clean water, lead-free water to the residents of the city of Chicago. You know, under, under Randy Connor's, um, authority, uh, they were able to successfully put forward 40 miles of water main a year. With the previous commissioner, we were lucky to get five. Now, the larger contractors are going to be okay, because if they can't do work here in Chicago, they'll just go to a different state. But it was the minority women-owned businesses that were really, that were really struggling with the previous administration, and I'm glad to see that Randy's back, because he is a construction manager. He understands that we got to get the work done, providing clean water to the residents of Chicago, but at the same time ensuring that small businesses are participating in these types of procurement. So I'm glad to see that you're back, Randy, and hopefully we can get those miles back up, also deal with the thousands, of thousands of lead service lines that are, that are in the, the city, and looking at them from a, from a way of economic development to provide smaller businesses the opportunity to participate in those contracts. So I appreciate the, the appointment from Mayor Johnson and bringing back Randy Connor and full support of, of the Commissioner, and looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ronnie Mosley.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I know you're a Cubs fan, but, uh, I'm going to borrow some words from a White Sox player, Sam Ewen, who said, "Hard work spotlights the character of people." Some turn up their sleeves, some turn up their noses, and some don't turn up at all. Here we have a man who is back for his second time around, and we are thankful for your service. We are proud of you. Thank you for once again answering the call, and I am in full support of this appointment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for that. Chair recognizes Alderman Mike Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, forgive me for being a little glum, but the fact is, is that our city is not immune to global climate change and the impacts that climate change has on our city's infrastructure. Um, we've seen it in the past year with the flooding in our communities. We know the access to fresh water here is of vital importance, not just to our great city, but our region, potentially our country. The impacts of climate change potentially make this appointment one of the most important appointments of this time, and I can't think of a better person to put that into the hands to than someone who understands Chicago government, has the relationships, and the understanding that we need to get things done. That's the most important thing for me. We need to move projects forward. I think you get that, Randy, and I'm, uh, forgive me.
Uh, Alonso, Alfonso.
I'm joining the parade here. Randy, you get that. And listen, uh, I think we need more folks like you, particularly given the challenges that our great city is facing. You have no small task, task ahead of you, but I know you're very much ready for it. So congratulations, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes the Alderman Nick Spazato.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too support this resolution. Randy will always be Randy to me. I'm not changing my contacts in my phone book, so, uh, happy to have you back. As you know, you have an awesome team, so I look forward to you leading your awesome team. So congratulations, look forward to working with you, and, Mr. President, great appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in support of this appointment, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for making yet another fine appointment in your cabinet. We spoke a lot during committee, I said a lot during committee, and you got overwhelming and resounding, um, support, so I don't even know why you brought down the muscle today, man. Yeah, so, but it's good to see you, um, standing here with, with him, and I appreciate what you do, Commissioner Connor. Let me just state this clearly, and I've told this story before from when I was in corporate America, working with Ross and Perina, and when our production lines went down, and about close to $400,000 worth of salaries were sitting in the conference room trying to figure out what was going on with their production line, and so someone said, "Let's go out to the production line and see what's happening," and within 15 minutes the problems were resolved. Commissioner Connor, you that guy, you don't sit in that conference room. You get out there on that line with the people to see what the problem is, so we can get resolutions for our constituents, and that is why I'm so excited that you're back. People who don't feel like it's a, a stress to go out among the people, to go out into the community and go to the job site, but want to do it, and that's who you are, and for that, I appreciate you. You have my full support, and, um, anything that we can do from this council and to give you the tools that you need to be successful, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman James Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this, uh, rise in support of this appointment, as Alderman O'Shea and some of my other colleagues mentioned, um, I've seen you on the streets, and, uh, for me and for the residents in my, my ward, we, we truly appreciate that. It was a few years ago where you helped us on Gray Street, um, and, and there was a lot of work involved, and just having you on the scene and talking to members of your staff, it was very much appreciated. Last but not least, you know how to treat people as well. From what I hear, aldermen are not always easy to deal with, uh, but I, I think you, obviously you do an excellent job of dealing with all of us and in our needs. So, Mr. Mayor, once again, thank you again for giving opportunities to the sons and daughters of Chicago, allowing us to, to continue to get these leadership roles is much appreciated, and it's, and it's seen by all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Anthony Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. President, I too rise to support this resolution- Uh, Mr. President, I too rise to support this resolution and this appointment. Uh, there's no better family than the Connor family. Uh, I've known the entire family for over 25 years and they are a family of public servants from the top to the bottom. And so, I'm extremely delighted to see that you are giving up of yourself again and your family to come back and do what you all do best and that is serve the public. So, it's no, I have all the confidence in the world that we know the job that you're gonna do. I'm just glad that you decided to come back in the role that you're coming. So, thank you so much and great appointment, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Chris Taliafarro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of your appointment and, um, wanna congratulate Randy. I, I thought you had a fishing boat and you were doing well, um, but we all welcome you back and I, I just recall, Commissioner, when, uh, I believe it was in 2017, uh, when you took over a department that was struggling and, and that was, uh, going through lawsuits. And you certainly took it on and, and stepped up to the helmet at a very critical time. And, um, as you stepped up, you knocked it out the park and you hit a home run. And I think all of us, uh, during that 2017, 2018 timeframe, uh, grew to have great confidence in your leadership, uh, because we were able to rise out of the troubles that we were going through in the water department. And so, I have no doubt, uh, that in your service as a Commissioner, once again, uh, that you'll take on the problems that we may see, um, with lead service line replacements and, uh, any other problems that you're faced with. We stand in full confidence of, um, your abilities. And so, thank you for your leadership and thank you for returning to us once again. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Raymond Lopez.
Again, thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, members of the City Council. I want to absolutely unequivocally commend you, Mayor, on convincing Commissioner Connor to return to the city of Chicago and to put his talents to work for the people across all 50 wards, for the millions of people that call the city of Chicago home. I'm not going to comment about our multitude of stories together on the streets, um, because we all, I think thankfully, have those experiences or his willingness to call us back unlike the previous Commissioner who called us in days, not in hours, like Randy's known for doing. And yes, I do know, you are Randy. But ladies and gentlemen, I rise today because I also want to stress, not only to this room, but to all of Chicago that's watching, just what a perilous shape the water department was left in, so that when we are setting expectations for our new Commissioner, that we are not holding to a standard without fully understanding what he's inherited. He's inherited a department in complete disarray. And this is not, to be clear, a knock on this administration, but the last, because in 2021, the previous administration convinced this body to borrow 4.4 billion, with a B, billion dollars for infrastructure. 300, hundreds of millions of dollars from our Water Enterprise Fund alone to cover investments like the $350 million WIFA loans, excuse me, $60 million for lead service replacement for private properties, $133 million for waterways and pathways and so much more. As many of us sat in our CIP briefings, we learned that we not only no longer have the capacity to do this work, but we're also losing out on the money that we borrowed and having to return funds because we simply did not get the work done, as some of my colleagues have alluded to. That is a travesty, Mr. President, because not only does it prevent people, prevent businesses, prevent WMBE opportunities, it also forces our communities to live with unhealthy options that we could avoid if we were focused on getting the job done. I am so very thankful that all of us know that Randy's the man to get the job done. We know our business community and our contractors are anxious because they know he is someone that they could work with. And I think appointing him in this position, Mr. President, shows that you too understand that we have to get the job done, especially when it comes to a resource that has quality bond rating and the ability to take on the burden financially for the cost of what we need to do to create a healthier Chicago. So, I gladly join my colleagues today in support of this and know that we will all be there for you, my friend, to make sure that everything that I've said, everything that we've said, can help you become successful at. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Andre Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I rise in support and I wanna commend you, uh, for this recommendation for appointment. Uh, when we think about what government is supposed to do for folks, right? You got people in Chicago pay taxes, they wanna see a return on that investment when they're paying those taxes. Doing the fundamentals, the bread and butter stuff that hits your door when it comes to water, when it comes to streets and sanitation, those things are crucial to building confidence in government. And I am really glad with this appointment because, you know, being a second-termer now, I got to see different levels of leadership as it related to Department of Water Management. Um, I think when people pay the taxes and wanna see a return on their investment, what is core is response, that when something goes bad, when there's a water main that's broken, that there is a response, that is a quick response and that it is addressed. When I first came in the first term, I saw that level of response and then saw a bit of a dip when there was a change in leadership. Um, although I appreciate the focus on data and dashboards and a lot of things that were added to Department of Water Management, there was a lot lost as it related to response times and actually getting the job done and fixing issues. That makes it more difficult for the ward offices that then have to address things when neighbors come to us wondering why things aren't being done quickly. It hinders our ability to execute on so many other things for our neighbors. So, to see someone coming back into the role whose focus is primarily that level of response, who we can reach out, send a text message, make a phone call to get that improvement to happen, is core and fundamental to people having confidence in government and to our neighbors understanding that when they pay these taxes, they get a return on that. And so, uh, I, I wanna commend you on the decision. Uh, I think we're gonna be in really good shape going forward when it comes to improvement of, you know, uh, lead service lines, but also just regular water main breakage. We've got water mains out there that are over 80 years, over 100 years that need to be replaced. And the work that you all do and the, how expeditiously you do it is something that's valued. So, I, so I don't mess up the first name, we'll say, "Mr. Connor, thank you so much for coming back to service and serving the city and we look forward to working with you in partnership to make sure we improve the lives of all Chicagoans." Uh, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I have one more speaker before Alderman Irvin closes. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this proposed appointment? So, with that, these are our final two speakers. The Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of this appointment. Um, in the last couple of months, it's very seldom that a City Council agrees on, on something, but it's great that today we agree on you, Randy. Um, you're great for the city, for Chicago, from Chicago, by Chicago, everything about the city. Um, I appreciate all you do. I appreciate your communication with our offices. I appreciate staff that you have as well. Um, I'm positive going forward that this enormous amount of work that your department has in front of you, that you're, you're the right person for the job. Um, please lean on us any way we can help as well. And, uh, I, I'm so happy for this appointment, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I see Alderman Silverstein had, for hand raise? I just happened to see, she does. All right. Very good. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say, "Welcome back, Randy," and I am looking very forward to working with you again and with your wonderful staff. So, welcome back.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Are there any other Alders before I offer deference for the final words from Chairman Irvin? Seeing no other hands for the final word, the Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, uh, we all speak very highly of, uh, I'm gonna stop calling you Alfonzo, I'm gonna call you Randy, uh, going forward. I just thought this was, uh, interesting and we learned a lot about people. You're probably one of the first, uh, members of the administration that I met when I became Alderman back in 2011 and trying to help us, uh, do things and, and at the end of the day, the bread and butter of all of us is how we serve and service our constituents. And, uh, Randy was one of those individuals that definitely understands that and helps us to achieve those goals. Um, as has been stated, and I think Alderman Villegas talked about this, the water, water department is, is pretty much like a billion-dollar corporation on its own. We think about everything that flows through it financially and both operationally. And, uh, and I'm gonna steal something from, uh, Mr. Blakemore, uh, the goods, the contracts, the jobs and the services that you are entrusted with to help balance that across our city. Uh, we've had a lot of conversations about MBE, WBE participation and local participation, and we know that you understand, uh, the job and how it impacts and can impact all of Chicago, especially those that are most challenged. Two things, deliver the water, deliver the dollars. And everything, I think everything from there will flow from there. And with that, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider and congratulations.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Congratulations. Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Item number two is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the annual appropriation ordinance for year 2024 amendment within Fund 925. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items three, item three are 14, uh, of which 12 are ordinances which are transferring funds between Accounts 9008 and Account 0017. All of the ordinances except for items number five and 11 are moving funds, funds from Account 9008 to Account 0017. Account 9008 is the automatic expense allowance. Account 0017 is the wage allowance. So, on items three, four, six, eight through 10, 12, 13 and 14, Alders are moving funds from the automatic expense allowance to the wage allowance in order to pay for wages for staff. Those that are going the opposite direction are designed to give the wards more flexibility in expenses. So, again, I make, uh, make a motion to pass items three through 14, uh, with item seven being deferred at the request of the Alderman of the 26th Ward. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Now for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, the Chair recognizes Chairman Villegas.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council. Reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which met on Tuesday, February 13th, the Committee held a meeting and recommends passage of the following items. Items one through 16 on the report are a series of appointments or reappointments to various special service areas during the January 24, 2024 City Council meeting. Reappointments of A. Thomas Paspalos, Maria M. Surapas, Frank J. Caputo, Anastasia Makradikis to SSA number 16. Reappointments of Jason R. Cross, Anthony A. Quayum and Nicholas A. Yasan to SSA number 21-2016. Appointment of Jacob Ringer to SSA number 23. Appointment of Adam Silverstein to SSA number 33. Reappointments of Etta B. Cosione, Mark Davis, Kenneth Dotson, Michael Hochhauser, Timothy Joswiak and Kevin J. Greco to SSA number 35-2015. Reappointment of Henrik L. Christensen to SSA number 60. I move for passage of these appointments or reappointments by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Just, Mr. President, members of the City Council, on Tuesday, February 13th, 2024, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development passed the resolution to hold a subject matter hearing on the Illinois data residency. At this hearing, the Committee addressed why storing data within the state of Illinois reduces both jurisdictional and security concerns. Two subject matter experts provided testimony on the positive economic impact data residency, uh, has had on other states and municipality. No votes were taken. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. For the Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Chair recognizes Chairwoman Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on February 14th, 2024, to consider nine ordinances regarding liquor moratoriums in the first, 16th, 28th, 37th, 39th and 49th wards. The Committee has recommended passage of each of these items. O2024-0006857 and others ending in 6938, 6966, I'm sorry, 6969, 7112, 7113, 7442, 7443, 7506 Mr. President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendations of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
O2024-0007355, an ordinance to amend Section 3-50 of the Municipal Code Regarding Paper, Carry-Up Bag Regulations by Alderman Irvin in the 28th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the Committee on Housing and Real Estate, the Chair recognizes Chairman Sigcho Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, members of City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held a meeting on February 16th, 2024. The Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of 10 ordinances, including various agreements, land sales and one acquisition. We also had an appointment confirmation where my report begins. Item number one is appointment 2024-007307, the appointment of Lisette Castañeda as Commissioner of the Department of Housing.
Thank you. Are there any Alders that wish to speak to this appointment? Chair recognizes Alderman Mike Rodriguez.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. President. I was incredibly, incredibly impressed, not just by the most important fact that you shared with me, that your favorite tacos are from 26th Street out to Totonicos in my ward, um, but I was absolutely impressed by your breadth of knowledge, uh, on our city's housing situation, your thoughtful ideas about how we move forward as a great city into the future. Um, I think your resume speaks volumes about your commitment to our great city, your commitment to this most important of institutions, um, and most important of endeavors, leading, uh, our city's efforts when it comes to housing. Um, the fact is, is that we've had record numbers of individuals, um, leaving our great city. We've had significant number of peoples coming to our city as well, uh, both wealthy individuals and migrants, uh, who've come to the city. Handling these complexities takes a very, very much nuanced approach. I think you really do have that nuanced approach. I'm very, very proud to support this, uh, appointment and I'm looking forward to working with you in this very difficult, challenging job that I think you will do very, very well at. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in support of this appointment. I have the privilege of knowing Lisette Castañeda as an organizer, as a practitioner of what it means to bring housing to communities that need it. I'm also extremely confident in Lisette's ability to address, uh, housing as diverse as it is across the city of Chicago. Uh, there are communities like mine that are rapidly being gentrified in which bringing new- new affordable developments are absolutely necessary. There are also communities across the city of Chicago that have been historically disinvested in and have not seen any development. And Lisette has the imagination, the creativity, the rigor and the hard work ethic to make sure that we get dollars into those communities so that we can sustain families that are homeowners, so that we can house folks that have been unhoused for decades. And she also understands that we're living in a city and in a moment right now where we have to think about housing creatively. The systems that currently exist have only gotten us so far. We need to be able to rethink the systems in which we fund housing in the city of Chicago, but also how we get creative about how we build revenue sources. And so, you know, there's not a lot of people who can come to a committee through an appointment and have organizers, policy wonks and unions support their appointment. But someone like Lisette brings that collective and diverse set of people who believe in her ability to do right by the city of Chicago. I'm excited about this appointment. I'm excited about all of the relationships and the work that you are going to be able to bring to this great city, but more importantly, make sure that housing is a right in the third largest city in the country, not a privilege. Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Daniel Laspada.
I knew we could do it. Thank you, Mr. President. I am so sincerely honored to stand in support of this appointment. Commissioner, there's nothing about this moment I could have imagined or predicted when we first met, but I am glad and truly proud of all of it. I know our work locally, but I also know that you understand so deeply the varied and complex housing needs of Chicago, the varied and complex needs of every development moving forward, whether it's mixed income, affordable market rate housing, how do we get to a community and a city that everyone can afford, that everyone can thrive in? And if even half of what could happen in this city over the next 60 days does happen in terms of funding affordable housing, the opportunities for what we can do over the next four years is just outstanding. And I'm beyond thrilled to get to do this work on this level with you. Thank you for taking up the challenge. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak? The Chair recognizes Alderman Walter Burnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I also rise in support of this appointment. Had the pleasure to meet with the Commissioner, know of her work with Lucha, also know of her work on being on the Land Trust Board, dealing with all of my ARO units that we've got contributed in our ward. I think, Mr. Mayor, this is a unique, very unique appointment because of her knowledge from being not only an advocate for affordable housing and a fighter for affordable housing, but also a builder of affordable housing and understand all of the loopholes that people who build affordable housing have to go through. So that's very unique and I think this is a blessed time to be the Commissioner of the Department of Housing with all of the ammunition that this mayor is giving you in order to make things happen. So we need to work together and take advantage of it. Although I am a little selfish about my ward, I guess with this new title, I have to care about the rest of the city also. But I look forward to affordable housing being built all across this city and we're bringing people up and equalizing this city to make sure everyone has a decent and fair place to stay in the city of Chicago. Look forward to working with you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Just for OIG purposes, again, ammunition is a figurative word. The Chair recognizes Alderman Andre Vasquez.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President. I stand in support of this appointment. I want to commend you on the decision. You know, I think some of us here that have like been lifelong Chicagoans understand how challenging it is to really find a place you can call home. Like there's many of us whose families have come and rented and gotten displaced multiple times over, been transported from one neighborhood to the other, and the way that disrupts life and it disrupts safety for our city is something that I think some of us get, not only rhetorically or theoretically, but it's part of our experience. And so, having the conversation with Ms. Castañeda and understanding, also living that experience, bringing that to this position, I believe is crucial and core to solving a lot of the challenges we see in our city. I want to thank Alder Person Fuentes, who really summed it up. Different parts of town have different challenges when it relates to housing, right? You've got places like the 40th Ward where gentrification, one, it's been displacing people there, it becomes a lot harder to find affordability, and so the ways to do it are different than it might be in other places. You can't find a large lot to do large developments, but talking about affordable dwelling units or additional dwelling units and finding different ways to subsidize housing, coming up with different solutions and having the impetus and momentum to push them forward is key to moving our city forward. I would be remiss if I didn't commend Commissioner Navarro for all the work she had done to kind of bring us to this point and to see that under Ms. Castañeda's leadership, we continue that mission and move forward, that we think about not only affordability, but really the whole spectrum of housing. When we have folks who can't afford even affordable housing and we have to think about what permanent supportive housing looks like, what it means to have affordability, what it means to have people who want to become homeowners. Creating the kind of environment for all those folks to be successful requires multiple focus on a lot of different things. And I'm very confident that you'll be able to deliver as our Commissioner in that role. I won't put too much, I love the fact that we have similar experience in what it means to be in Chicago because we want to call a place home. We don't want to keep moving around. And there's so many people in Chicago that feel the same way. When we think about us being behind 140,000 units of affordability and everything else that's needed, being able to have a partner in that position that has the experience that you do and has the passion that you do for it, is something I believe the city will benefit immensely for. And so I look forward to partnering with you and want to commend you again for the appointment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chairman Sigil Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will be brief in my remarks. We had a really, a really good productive meeting during the confirmation hearing in the Housing Committee. And I, as Chair of the Housing Committee, I am full, I have full confidence that we will now finally, we'll work together collaboratively to ensure that we can truly deliver on equity for the city of Chicago. The challenges that we have are tremendous. We have 80,000 people today in the city of Chicago that continue to be unhoused. We continue to see, unfortunately, narratives that continue to dehumanize unhoused residents. We got to remember, we have our constituents that need us to think about solutions and proactively address the issues of the unhoused that are not unique to any community. We have seen this is an issue across the city, in every single zip code. And as such, we ask that we not only commit to support the Commissioner, but also work together to ensure that we work with all the weight of government, to ensure that we never again see the policies in the past that saw almost 300,000 block residents displaced from the city of Chicago because of the unwillingness of the city to address these issues of housing. In the city of Chicago, we see housing as a human right. And as such, we need to make sure that it's followed with funding and support and smart policies that come from the ground. I have no doubt in my mind that we have a Commissioner today that represent those, those communities have been victims of violence, the violence and atrocities, what is to leave people unhoused, evictions, foreclosures and the displaces of so many people. Just today, in the city of Chicago, we continue to see the cries of many people who come here to the council, asking for the City Council to act. And today we take that step by appointing a Commissioner that I know has the experience on the ground, the heart of an scholar and an activist that will now put in the health assistance Commissioner equity in practice. And that's what people in the city of Chicago want. We are not going to allow the narratives that want to take us to the back of the civil wars or wars to create narratives that pitch against each other. Our commitment to work with every single community, Southwest sides in particular, being of course devastated, but these tragic flooding natural disasters that continue to be unaddressed. Today, we have the opportunity to work together and commit and recommit to work together to make sure that we have in the city of Chicago, housing as a human right. So I'm proud to make sure that we have a Commissioner that reflects those values and principles. So I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the associated and successful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Congratulations. Chairman Sigil Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number two is Ordinance 02024-007431, acquisition of eight acre property with industrial building at 4130 South Morgan Street from TLP 4130 Morgan LLC for operation of Department of Fleet and Facility Management's Streets and Sanitation Facility in the 11th Ward. And item number three was a direct introduction, 02024-007804, lease agreement for use of office space to service the Office of Inspector General at 231 South La Salle Street in the 34th Ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The following items are grouped together from the Department of Housing. Item number four is Ordinance 2024-007430, sale of city-owned lots at 3517, 3431, 3433 and 3303 in West Florinoy Street and 3533 West Lexington Street to an execution of redevelopment agreement with Home and Housing LLC for East Garfield Park Affordable Homes Project under City Lots for Working Families Program in the 24th Ward. Item number five is Ordinance 2024-007337, restructuring a loan agreement with Erie Cooperative Limited Partnership for Rehabilitation of Properties in vicinity of West Huron Street and North Ketsi Avenue in the 27th Ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The remaining items from the Department of Planning and Development are grouped also for convenience. Item number six was passed as substitute, this is SO204-0007432, First Amendment to Right-of-Entry Agreement for Time Extension of, to inspect city property at 1325 West 119th Street and certain adjacent land by West Pullman Development Partners LLC and DL3 Realty Advisors LLC in the 24th Ward. Item number seven is Ordinance 02024-0007328, sale of city-owned property at 6949 South Martin Luther King Jr. Drive to Amanda Crew under adjacent neighbors' land acquisition program in the 6th Ward. Item number eight is 02024-007362, sale of vacant city-owned property at 4359 West Monroe Street to Larry Newman and Venetia Newman through the Chi Block Builder Land Sale Program in the 28th Ward. Item number nine is Ordinance 2024-0007369, sale of city-owned vacant property at 1242 South Harding Avenue to Eileen Burke at 4047 West Fifth Avenue to Pamela Walker at 4157 West Fifth Avenue to Valerie Davis and at 1516 South Tripp Avenue to Darla Dobbs Senior under the Chi Block Builder Land Sale Program in the 24th Ward. Item 10 is Ordinance 2024-0007371, sale of 10 city-owned properties in the 17th Ward to selected buyers under the Chi Block Builder Land Sale Program in the 17th Ward. Item 11 is Ordinance 2024-007433, sale of vacant city-owned property at 531 North Laramie Street to Roman Castrejon and Jasmine Castrejon through the Chi Block Builder Land Sale Program in the 37th Ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. For the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, Chair recognizes Chairperson Laspada.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, a meeting was held on Tuesday, February 6th, 2024. The Committee held a subject matter hearing on the complete streets ordinance with the Department of Transportation and no votes were taken on this topic. There were 215 other routine traffic items before the Committee that passed. If there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote from the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider the vote.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the Committee on Police and Fire, Chair recognizes Chairman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council. Reporting for your Committee on Police and Fire, for which a meeting was held on February 5th, 2024, there was one item before the Committee for which the Committee recommends do pass. Item one, Order 2023-64-24, Amendment of the Municipal Code, Chapter 2-84 by adding a new section, 2-84050, establishing a comprehensive staffing analysis for the Chicago Police Department. Mr. President, I move the passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you much, Mr. Chairman. For the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs and Recreation, the Chair recognizes Chairman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. You're two for two with Laspada and Spazado, so. Reporting on your Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs and Recreation, also known as the Happy Committee, which was held a meeting on February 14th, 2024, the Committee recommends passage of one item, 0, I'm sorry, O2024-0007317, City of Chicago Special Events Ordinance 2024. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. For the final Committee, Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards, Chair recognizes Vice Chairperson Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards, which held a meeting on February 20th, 2024. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of members present. Page one contains document number O2023-0007343, the Amendment of the Municipal Code, Section 17-6-0403-F, by requiring special use approval for religious assembly permits in PMD 11, located in the 25th Ward. If no one wishes to speak, I move passage of this item by the most favorable roll call, first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance, an unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Thank you very much. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Pages one through two contain various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade in the 3rd, 15th, 21st, 25th, 27th, 28th, 32nd, 41st, 43rd and 46th wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Lastly, pages two through 12 contain various map amendments in the 1st, 9th, 11th, 12th, 19th, 21st, 23rd, 27th, 28th, 30th, 32nd, 35th, 36th, 38th, 40th, 44th, 45th and 49th wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Thank you for your enthusiasm. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
It's a long list today. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Very well. For the agreed upon calendar, matters of the agreed upon calendar, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've received from Clerk Anna Invalencia a total of four items proposed for the agreed calendar, consisting of congratulatory commemorative tributary resolutions from the following Alderpersons. Alderperson Harris, Alderperson Ramirez, also Person Rodriguez, Alderperson Gil Viegas, and I move these... and I move these be passed in the omnibus.
Very well. Hearing no objections, so ordered. New business. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Zoning amendments refer to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. And exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Silverstein has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code titles 2 and 4 by adding new section 2-36-520 and new chapter 4-24 regarding lithium ion battery safety standards for micro mobility devices, which is referred to the Committee on Police and Fire. Almen Martin has proposed ordinance for honorary street designation as Demetrius Jimmy Pyris Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Martin also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Ozzy Goff Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Lawson has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 4-388, by modifying various sections regarding sale of, licensing for, and limitations to alcoholic liquor at Wrigley Field, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almen Lawson and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 2-112-010, by requiring City Council advice and consent for appointment of Department of Public Health Commissioner, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Almen Knudsen has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-60-073, by increasing number of lakefront venue liquor licenses issued per period and by including concrete pad at Beach House at North Avenue Beach, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almen Riley and Almen Viegas have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 2-8, by adding a new Article 5 regarding implementation of transparency rules by city departments, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Almen Napolitano has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 7-28-710, by prohibiting dumping of foodstuffs that afford food or harborage to wild animals, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Almen Spazado has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-60-022, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Addison Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almen Viegas has proposed ordinance for correction of the City Council Journal of Proceedings of November 15, 2023, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Almen Viegas also has proposed resolution for expression of support for Illinois Municipal League request to Governor Pritzker and the Illinois General Assembly to protect full funding of local government distributive funds, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Almen Ramirez Rosa and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 2-44-135, by extending expiration date for demolition surcharge to December 31, 2024, which is referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Almen Wagas Pack has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 2409 North Elston Avenue, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Irvin has proposed ordinance for opening of the public way at North Kilborn Avenue between West Chicago Avenue and West Ohio Street, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Burnett has proposed ordinance for opening of West Division Street on the north side between North Halsey Street and North Larrabee Street, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Burnett also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 17-12-1005D, regarding occupancy rates of principal tenants utilizing high-rise building signs, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Lopez has proposed resolution to call for clemency investigations incorporated to investigate claims of innocence filed by inmates claiming incarceration due to coerced confessions via use of torture, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Two committees call, the Committee on Public Safety and the Committee on Finance. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Almen Lopez and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings regarding impact of Chicago Board of Education Resolution 24-0222-RS1, which seeks to develop new policy that codifies best practices for school safety, which is referred to the Committee on Education and Child Development. I'm sorry. Two committees call, the Committee on Education and the Committee on Police and Fire. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Almen Ramirez has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Nicholas Ramirez Jr. Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Ramirez also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Eric S. Hernandez Boulevard, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Robinson has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 2-4, by adding a new section 2-4-125, establishing task force on poverty elimination and economic security, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Almen Laspada has proposed resolution to call for hearings on lowering citywide default speed limit from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour, which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Two committees call, the Committee on Traffic and the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of all the met introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for the approval of the general journal. Alderman Mitchell, for the approval of the journal.
Mr. President, I am not aware of any corrections to the journal from the February 15, 2024 special meeting, and move that it be approved.
Very well. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Do believe we have some unfinished business. Alderman Mitchell.
I am aware of one item of unfinished business. It was filed by Alderman O'Shea and calls for a vote on substitute ordinance 2023-004978, which was deferred and published on January 31, 2024.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. I filed a Rule 41 Notice with the clerk of my intent to call for a vote on this substitute ordinance concerning an amendment of the Municipal Code regarding small box retailers. If anyone wishes to speak, I request the opportunity to close the debate and for at that time, move for a passage by a roll call vote.
Very well, then. Are there any alders that wish to speak to this item? Chair recognizes Alderman Derek Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I definitely want to support this resolution that my colleague to the south is introducing. I have been dealing with this situation with Dollar Tree for the past five years. I've met with the top leadership with Dollar Tree and Family Dollar, and they came out to my community. They made me a ton of promises, and they have not kept those promises. Don't get me wrong, I love Dollar Tree, but the Dollar Trees in the suburbs are nothing like the Dollar Trees in the city of Chicago in our communities. I have three Dollar Trees that are approved to come into my community, and I do regret it now. No one likes to see empty stores because all it does is bring down the community, but Dollar Tree and Family Dollars have been, they have not been such good neighbors. I purchase a lot of arts and crafts for my after-school programs from Dollar Tree, but I don't do it at my own stores in my community. I have to go to the suburbs to buy arts and crafts for my after-school programs because they're not the same. And all I've been asking Dollar Tree to do is treat our community as they do the suburban community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Jeanette Taylor.
So imagine sending your two daughters to work. God blessed me with the same person twice. One is 21, one is 31. One is a carry and conceal, one is not. And because the store in Alderman and Moore's Ward kept getting robbed, my child was asked to bring her weapon to the store for safety. So imagine how it felt to get a phone call that my oldest daughter was in the back with her, with her carry and conceal, but my youngest daughter was at the register getting robbed. Robbed at gunpoint. Imagine how that made her oldest sister feel to feel like she couldn't protect her. And with all due respect to Alderman Moore, who answered my call, who got the superintendent, who is now the superintendent, at the time he was the commander of the 7th District, but got him to actually come to the store to make sure folks were okay. Alderman Moore did reach out to the store, and nothing was done. And so it's funny now that one of my colleagues has come up with an ordinance to hold them accountable, and now we're being asked to wait. What would you say to me if my daughter had gotten killed? Y'all ain't got enough money to pay me for how I would have been burning down this city over my kid. And so the thought that we gotta have this conversation about waiting, how much longer do we have to wait for the things we deserve in our community? The Dollar Store, Dollar General was supposed to be our saving grace. I have a community that has a bunch of corner stores that don't do right by me. I have a bunch of gas stations that don't do right by me. And so the thought that the Dollar Store started off all this great and then decided, oh, they ain't worthy, but makes millions of dollars on the 1st and the 15th. Let's talk about it. Because our community needs this store, but not to the point where we are compromising who we are in our communities and accepting less. And so I'm gonna support Alderman O'Shea, A, because I said I would, and B, you don't get to come after the fact. Who are you? And y'all came up with this notion, y'all wanna leave, bye. We trying to build our own stores in our own communities anyway. And so the thought that there is this much chaos after he put in his ordinance says what type of corporation y'all are. It says what type of business y'all run, and it's not a good one. And so why I get, yeah, we go through this thing of, well, we don't wanna have nothing. We might as well have nothing. Come into a store where it's trash everywhere. Gentlemen got killed in the Dollar Store around the street from my house. They literally opened the next day with no support to the workers who were there. And this incident had nothing to do with the store. And so tell me how I'm supposed to give you another month. My daughter probably wouldn't have had another month. What would you say to me then? Would your condolences help? Would you hiring people that look like us and the black and Latino to tell us we should wait a month? Is that what's gonna help? Let's call this like it is. I am sick and tired of us waiting. You should have did your due diligence before, and he's not the first older person to call you. David Moore talked to me the entire day to calm me down about my kids. And so I appreciate him reaching out. And so the thought that you all wanna come behind the A-ball and say, oh, we need this and we need that, not our monkey, not our circus. You have my yes, Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank our colleague, Alderman O'Shea, for the work he's done. We know that in addition to what's been said here, these Dollar Stores actually undercut the local businesses that are nearby, your corner stores, your grocery stores. It undercuts dollars that can be coming back to people who own businesses here in our city in all the different neighborhoods. I will draw a little bit of dissonance from what my colleague, Alderwoman Taylor, said. I don't think that when Mr. O'Shea introduces ordinance, it brought chaos. It actually brought order. It actually brought a Dollar Store company to say, oh, now we have liaisons. We'd love to talk to you and figure out what we could fix. That was not happening prior but for the fact that the ordinance was introduced, right? So when we were having conversations, and people were like, well, now we have liaisons, so now we should just back off. Don't fall for the okie doke. Because if this ordinance doesn't pass, those liaisons will disappear in a year or two. And we'll be right back to the same argument about the support that's necessary. There's a lot of lobbying and a lot of surface handshakes with members of this council to try to get us to slow things down. You don't have to. It's proven. If it wasn't for our colleague introducing the ordinance, the improvement wouldn't have happened. They don't care about you. Until the ordinance gets introduced, and now they're scared and wanting to get people to back off of it. We want to make our city better. We want our businesses to do better. We don't want people to just come in and become vulture capitalists and get dollars off of us without investing back in the community. So this, I would argue with our colleagues, is a no-brainer. It should dang near be a 50-0 in support of this resolution, in this ordinance. So I support it. I'm not gonna count on somebody who gets dollars off of us that tells us they're gonna be a partner when they haven't proven as such until it becomes to a boiling point. So, yeah, I would recommend to our colleagues as well to support our colleague Alderman O'Shea's ordinance and get this moving to make our city better. It's a pretty quick vote to do. Thank you very much for your work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Carlos Rosa.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I too want to thank my colleague for bringing forward this resolution. You know, in the 35th Ward, before we go to the Department of Streets and Sanitation and ask for enforcement, before we go to the Department of Buildings and ask for enforcement, we reach out directly to the business, which I'm sure is something that many of you do. And on armitage, in what was formerly the 35th Ward for the eight years that I represented that stretch of armitage, there is a Dollar Store there. And for years, we dealt with issues related to cleanliness, safety, issues that impacted the quality of life of 35th Ward or most of residents. And sometimes the Dollar Store would be responsive, other times they would not. And when new management would come in or new staff would come in, suddenly we would have all the same issues that we were experiencing for months and years at a time. The parking lot was a complete disaster, a complete mess. We had to get the Department of Streets and Sanitation in there to go after them and enforce our city codes. I just recently learned from my colleague, who now represents that Dollar Tree, Alderwoman Jesse Fuentes, that those issues continue now, even after eight years of directly trying to address them with the management there, with the ownership there. So when our attempts to work with the business fail, we have to look for other solutions. And I think that this is a solution that has been brought forward that provides us with another tool to ensure that these businesses are good neighbors and are not negatively impacting the quality of life. So I commend my colleague and everyone that worked on this ordinance and made changes to it to ensure that this is the best possible piece of legislation that we can pass today, and I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Nick Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't plan on speaking on this, and this is one of those rare times I was truly undecided about something, and I made up my mind this morning. But I just want to say one thing to all my colleagues, and I'm supporting the ordinance, Matt, as I told you before now, so I'm with you on this, but, and I have only one Dollar Tree in my ward. But guess what? They weren't, I didn't feel they were good a business, just like some other businesses in my ward weren't good businesses. But you know what I did, everybody? I talked to them. After I talked to them, they shaped up, all right? It wasn't just them, it's other businesses in my ward, I'm sure it's everywhere. Life's about communication, people. Talk it out, talk to them, things will get done. I know some of you had some different stories. I had a different experience. My Dollar Store wasn't a good neighbor. We talked to them. They became a good neighbor. So I just wanted to say that, like I said, I didn't plan on talking, but I do support Matt in this ordinance, so thank you very much for letting me speak, Mr. President.
Of course. Thank you very much. Are there any other alders before Alderman O'Shea provides the last comment, the last word around this? Okay, the Chair recognizes Alderman Matt O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. Put your seatbelts on. The ordinance before you is very simple. It does two things, and two things only. First, it requires Dollar Stores to post a placard on the outside of their buildings with contact information for elected officials and communities to make a phone call and to report a problem with that store. And what I've heard these past five months from many of you is there are problems with those stores. Second, it says that a new Dollar Store cannot open within one mile of an existing Dollar Store if the two stores are owned by the same company. It will not impact any existing stores in our city. It will not prevent an existing store from moving across the street or right next door. It will not prevent two Dollar Stores from opening near each other. Between 2017 and 2023, the companies that owned the three Dollar Stores that operate in our city, Dollar Tree, Dollar General, Family Dollar, they received more than 3,300 code violations. Repeat that. In six years, more than 3,300 code violations. Those violations include, but are not limited to, the sale of baby formula. That was six months past expiration date. Medicine, more than a year past expiration date. Medicine, more than a year past expiration date. Those stores have also been charged with overtaxing and overcharging customers. In total, these stores, over this six-year period, have received more than $600,000 in fines from the city of Chicago. Again, let me repeat that. $600,000 in fines with no noticeable change in their behavior. The Illinois Department of Labor is currently investigating claims of more than $80,000 in wage theft against these same companies, while their Illinois locations have collectively accrued nearly $1 million in fines from OSHA for unsafe and unsanitary working conditions. Aside from those startling figures, this council heard firsthand from our colleague, Alderman Taylor, about the horrible treatment her daughters received as employees of one of those companies. Now, research shows that Dollar Stores, they have a very unique business model. They like to operate in proximity to one another. They like to oversaturate a community. Today, in the city of Chicago, we have 149 Dollar Stores currently operating, but plenty more on the way. They're highly concentrated in minority communities. In the 17th Ward, there are 10 Dollar Stores. In the 2nd, 42nd, 43rd, and 44th Wards, there are zero Dollar Stores. Drive past any one of those 149 stores today, and you'll likely see overflowing dumpsters, broken fences, broken exterior lights, buildings in disrepair, shopping carts overturned on the sidewalk or in the parking lot. Yet it's funny, when I drive just five or 10 minutes outside my community in a predominantly white suburb, I don't see that. I see cleaned, well-maintained stores and parking lots. It's probably where my colleague Alderman Curtis goes to shop.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So that begs the question, question that I've been trying to get answers for, for five months. Why does this Fortune 200 company think that it's okay to maintain stores in suburban white communities and yet ignore stores in your community? When a Dollar Store comes into a neighborhood, they undercut other retailers, especially grocery stores. As other retailers leave, more vacancies pop up. More Dollar Stores come in, until a Dollar Store is a community's only option. Exacerbating our already very serious food desert problem in many neighborhoods we serve. This ordinance will help stop the proliferation of these stores and allow space for small, independent retailers to establish themselves in the marketplace, an approach that we know already works. In our license committee hearing, those of you who attended, we had Vanessa Hall Harper. She works as a councilman in Tulsa, Oklahoma. We flew her in. She told us a story of how she was able to bring a new full-service grocery store into her community in Tulsa, Oklahoma. Look it up. Only after she passed a law similar to this one. That operator told her point-blank, without that law, they would have never opened and they would never have been successful, which they are. Now, since last October, and this is really sticking in my craw, since last October, you folks know me, I'm pragmatic. I'm willing to work with anybody. I don't like getting bullshitted. I don't like getting my chain yanked. Apologize, Mr. President. I've been trying to work on this issue in good faith. Talked to attorneys, talked to lobbyists, talked to various business organizations, many of whom I support and have supported, about how we can address these issues. In meeting after meeting, phone call after phone call, email after email, the mayor's office was involved, Business Affairs and Consumer Protection was involved, the Law Department was involved, Streets and Sanitation was involved. I've heard the concerns and attempted to work with them towards an ordinance that everybody in this room would be comfortable with. Through those discussions, I've made seven concessions. We've had 10 iterations of this ordinance before you today. I've made seven concessions to try to get here. Dollar Stores made zero. Dollar Stores told me one thing on the phone, and then a week later said, can't do that. Can't afford that. For years, corporate hedge funds have used these stores to pull as much money as possible out of communities across our city while operating in a way that contributes significant negative impacts on those very same communities. They've had every opportunity to come to the table, not like this morning, hold it another month, oh, and get this one, we're gonna sue. That's floating around back here, folks. We're gonna sue. Bring it on. They have been dishonest brokers. If we're serious about working together and addressing our very significant food desert problems in many of our communities, if we're serious about helping small businesses continue to rebound from this pandemic, and serious about holding irresponsible corporations accountable for the harm they do in our communities, we need to act. We need to act today. I'm asking all of my colleagues to join me in voting yes for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. And on your motion, on your motion, Alderman O'Shea, your specific motion?
Respectfully, sir, I call for a roll call vote.
Okay, all right, very well. So there's a, on the motion to approve the substitute ordinance concerning the amendment of the municipal code regarding small box retailers, that motion has been made, and there's also been a request for this vote to be a roll call vote. So, members, please use the e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
Voting is now open. Please mark your vote.
Alderperson Robinson, not in the chambers. Alderman Hall. Alderman Hall is a nay. Alderman Chico? Thank you, sorry, didn't show up. Alderman O'Shea? Yes. Alderman O'Shea is a yes. Just need to see it. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez?
Yes.
Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Riley? Alderman Riley is a yes. Alderwoman Silverstein?
Yes.
Alderwoman Silverstein is a yes. Voting is now closed.
There are 42 yeas, seven nays. This matter is passed on the motion to reconsider. Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. In the opinion of the Chair, this motion fails. Alderman Mitchell, are you aware of any other pieces of unfinished business?
I am aware of no other pieces of unfinished business.
Very well. For miscellaneous business, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Yes. Except for the ordinance set in the date and time of the next meeting, I am not aware in miscellaneous business.
Thank you very much for the date and time of the next meeting. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk set in the date and time of the next meeting.
Very well. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago. Section 1, the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, March 20th, 2024, beginning at 10 o'clock a.m. in the council chamber on the second floor in City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Very well. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. On the omnibus, Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first, most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
All right, hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. This meeting is adjourned.